Meeting of Tuesday, November 19th, 2024 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Sprinkle, sprinkle.
This time, I'd like to recognize Leonard Lockhart.
Good evening. As Secretary of Windsor Board of Education, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operations of Windsor Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. Our mission is to develop the genius in every child and create lifelong learners. As the Windsor Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management of... management is the responsibility of the superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is a time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from audience will be confined to the time designated for a public address to the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Windsor Public Schools.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lockhart. At this time, wonderful to see everybody... a large group here tonight, and it's always wonderful when we can honor some special students in the district. So at this point, I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Hill for the CAP Student Leadership Awards.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent Student Leadership Award is given to three students at both Sage Park Middle School and Windsor High School, who show leadership to the school, academic prowess relative to ability, and service to others in the community. The goal of the award is to focus on students whose accomplishments and activities go beyond academic success and include service and leadership, making them role models for other students. So I'd first like to call Principal Jorgensen up so she can introduce her CAPS Award recipients from Sage Park Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. When I do call the awardees' name, I would like them to come up and sit next to me so they could sit in the spotlight. Sorry. So it is with great honor that I present the 2024-2025 Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent's Award for Community Service to Grant Colley. So a dedicated and humble student at Sage Park Middle School, Grant has achieved high honors every quarter and received multiple Student of the Month awards. Tomorrow, he will be inducted into the National Junior Honor Society, recognizing his consistent academic excellence and leadership. Alongside his academics, Grant is an accomplished athlete, passionate about both baseball and basketball, and enjoys expressing his creativity through drawing. He also actively serves on the Superintendent's Advisory Council, where he brings thoughtful suggestions on school policies monthly. You can thank him for the new dress code. Grant is a God-fearing young man who is led by his faith and his beliefs. He attends Faith Temple Church in Hartford, Connecticut, where after years of youth group involvement, he is now a youth group leader. This role allows him to make a positive impact within the church and the community at large, which he finds deeply meaningful. Through the church, Grant has been instrumental in organizing an annual back-to-school rally, which distributes free toys, backpacks, snacks, and drinks to children. The event also features a fire safety demonstration in collaboration with the local fire department and offer free haircuts to children in need. In addition to his work at the back-to-school rally, Grant dedicates himself twice a month to volunteer at his church's food pantry. He assists with packing and distributing food, organizing supplies, and helping individuals carry items to their vehicles. Grant finds purpose in helping others and intends to continue his community service for years to come. Grant's contribution extends beyond his community work. His Technology Student Association advisor, Ms. Rikis, describes him as supportive leader, an exceptional individual, always willing to help classmates, younger TSA students, and basketball teammates. His eighth-grade science teacher, Dr. Fitz, speaks highly of Grant's character, noting his kindness, humility, and dedication to others. She states, "Grant is a true example of selflessness and respect, and he uplifts everyone around him without a disparaging word. I couldn't imagine a student more deserving of this honor." Congratulations, Grant, on receiving the CAPS Community Service Award. Excellent. At this time, it is with great honor that I present the 2024-2025 Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence to Harshad Venkatesh. Hot seat, hot seat. All right. Throughout middle school years, which he still is now, he has consistently achieved high honors every quarter from sixth grade through eighth grade. Harshad is also in the 199th percentile for both reading and math on I-Ready assessment. He has completed the full I-Ready math program and is now progressing and receiving enrichment in Algebra II through Khan Academy and teacher supports. Currently, he is enrolled in Honors Geometry and Honors Algebra at Sage Park, where in which these two classes offer him two high school credits. On the S-Back Assessment, Harshad has scored level four, which signifies exceeding standards in both math and reading. He also participates in Math and Language Arts Challenge programs. His geometry teacher, Mrs. Schwartz, highlights Harshad's outstanding aptitude and dedication in mathematics, noting his top performance in High Honors Geometry. She states, "His analytical thinking, problem-solving skills, and grasp of complex concepts make him stand out in class." Harshad has received numerous awards, including recognition in every core subject, science, social studies, math, and language arts, to name a few, as well as his Unified Arts classes like Physical Education and Art. He has also earned the prestigious Dr. Sanders Award, the Christine Gasparino Science Award, and multiple Student of the Month awards and VIP awards. In recognition of his hard work and dedication, Harshad will also be inducted into the National Junior Honor Society tomorrow evening. Ms. Miettenen, his heart teacher, describes him as talented, focused artist whose attention to detail makes his works exceptional. He's well-rounded. Ms. Rikis, his TSA advisor, notes his remarkable dedication, academic drive, and willingness to help others. Harshad is an academic or an active member of the TSA Student Association. Harshad's excellent work ethic and passion for learning are evident in him never having missed not one assignment throughout all of his years at Sage Park. Not one. His commitment to academic excellence and helping fellow students make him a model student and leader in the school community. I look forward to seeing what the future holds for him. Congratulations and a job well done. Big girls can sit behind this table. All right. And last but certainly not least, it is with great honor that I present the 2024-2025 Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent's Award for Leadership to Amira Elarabi. Amira's achievement as a student leader have been apparent since her elementary years, when she received both the Colin Powell Award and the President Education Award in fifth grade for her academic excellence, growth mindset, and citizenship. Amira has maintained high honors every quarter during her time at Sage Park Middle School. She has earned awards for academic excellence in core subjects during both sixth and seventh grade, as well as for numerous Unified Arts classes. She has also been a consistent participant in both the Language Arts and Math Challenge classes. Alongside her academic achievement, she has earned multiple Student of the Month awards and will also be inducted into National Junior Honor Society tomorrow as a testament to her hard work. Ms. Chikini, Amira's sixth-grade math teacher, surprise? Describes her as an outstanding student and deserving leader. She shared Amira's dedication to learning and hard work make her an amazing role model. She is caring and a true ray of sunshine, always helping those around her. I am so proud of all of her accomplishments and can't wait to see what she will do in the future. Amira has been actively involved in the Technology Student Association for all three years at Sage Park, even attending the National TSA Conference in Louisville, Kentucky to represent our school. She has competed in many VEX IQ competitions and participated in math counts, demonstrating her commitment to expanding her academic skills beyond the classroom. In addition, Amira has been a vital member of the Sage Park Student Council throughout middle school. She was elected Vice President in sixth grade campaigning with Jack campaigning with Jack Welch's quote, "Before you are a leader, success is all about growing yourself. When you become a leader, it's all about growing others." This philosophy has guided her leadership approach. During her term, she organized school dances, fundraisers, and events, always striving to create positive experiences for her peers. In seventh and eighth grades, she has continued to assist with the school events, assemblies, student conferences, while generously volunteering her time both within and outside of school hours. It is understood that once Amira is on the task, the task will get done. So, Mrs. Schwartz, Amira's geometry teacher, praises her as an inspiring example of leadership in High Honors Geometry, Math Enrichment, and Math Challenge classes. Amira is inquisitive. Her perseverance and her positive mindset sets her apart. She encourages her classmates with her dedication and drive. So currently, Amira is taking three high school-level classes at Sage Park, Spanish One, Honors Algebra, and Honors Geometry. This also reflects her drive to succeed. Her ambition and her leadership abilities have many seeing her as a future leader in any field she chooses, Madam President. Congratulations to Amira on this well-deserved CAPS Award for Leadership. I am excited to see all that you will accomplish.
Thank you, Ms. Jorgensen. At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Parker up to introduce those from Windsor High School.
Yes. Good evening. Looks like the future is bright for Windsor High School. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Jorgensen. So, I have the high school edition of the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent Student Leadership Awards. For our first recipient, for the leadership award, I'd like to call up Ms. Albany Chambers. Albany is a senior at Windsor High School and is deeply involved in both athletics and leadership roles that have shaped her high school experience. She is passionate about inspiring others, whether it's on the volleyball court, tennis court, or in the classroom. As the varsity captain of both girls volleyball and tennis teams, she has spent all four years honing her athletic skills and learning to lead by example. In volleyball, she excels as a right-side hitter, having adapted to multiple positions throughout the years. While in tennis, she motivates her teammates and helps foster a collaborative team dynamic. Albany is deeply committed to fostering leadership and inclusivity in all aspects of her life, which is why she is also involved in the Young Women's Leadership Corps and the Action Corps Club, excuse me, where she works to support the rights of all students by promoting equity within our school community. There is her role as a Fresh Start Leader, Student Connections Leader, where she mentors incoming freshmen, guiding them through their first year of high school. She also is an active member of the Windsor High School Black Excellence Club, where she advocates for minority rights and amplifies underrepresented voices. Student Council and Student Advisory Board, there, she also helps organize school events and ensures the needs of her peers, that the peers are heard, excuse me. In addition to her school activities, Albany enjoys giving back to the community as she regularly volunteers with the Sage Park Girls and Boys Lead Art Club, which she co-founded while attending Sage Park Middle School. This summer, Albany was also able to further develop her leadership and organizational skills as a camp counselor at Windsor's Camp Treehouse. There, she facilitated arts and crafts activities and ensured that kids had safe and fun learning experiences. Throughout her time at Windsor High School, Albany is committed to a well-rounded approach to personal growth, balancing athletic endeavors with leadership, mentorship, and community service. Albany's future plans are to pursue a career in nursing, where she will continue to contribute to positive change and inspire others to reach their full potential. Dr. Hill, members of the board, I present to you Albany Chambers. Next up, our Community Service Award recipient, Ms. Alexa Banbury. Alexa is also a senior with a passion for leadership, serving the community, and healthcare. Throughout her high school career, Alexa has embraced a variety of academic, extracurricular, involuntary experiences that have helped her develop a strong work ethic, effective communication skills, and commitment to personal growth and helping others. Alexa is an active member of the Windsor High School tennis team, where she serves also as a varsity captain, and a key contributor to the debate team, where she has held the role of the captain for two years. In addition to sports, she too has dedicated herself to mentorship and leadership roles, including serving as Fresh Start Leader and Student Connections Leader, where she helps guide freshmen and create supportive environments for their transition into high school. It is through her volunteering experiences that Alexa shines and embraces opportunities to work with a diverse group of individuals while contributing to various community-focused projects, strengthening her collaboration and communication skills. She has volunteered at the Windsor Youth Theater as both the children's group leader and assistant stage manager. She also assists with the Teacher Assistant Program and peer tutoring at Windsor High School, where she supports both the academic and social-emotional growth of her peers. Her early interest in healthcare has been a major focus for her recent volunteer experiences. Alexa has participated in the National Student Leadership Conference in Medicine and Healthcare and took part in hands-on simulations and shadowing opportunities, including at the R. Adams Cowley Shock Trauma Center and the University of Maryland. These experiences have solidified her desire to pursue a career in medicine, where she can combine her passion for helping others with her interest in science and problem solving. In addition to her 300-plus, and counting, logged community service hours, she has also been recognized for her academic achievements. Alexa has received multiple All-School Awards in subjects such as Spanish, English, mathematics, and geometry. She has also earned distinctions, such as being a Smith College Book Award recipient and a member of the National Honor Society and World Cup Honor Society, both promoting excellence in community service, social justice, and academic excellence. With a strong foundation in leadership, academics, and community service, Alexa is excited to continue on building these experiences as she works towards becoming a physician's assistant. She loves looking for new opportunities to challenge herself and will continue contributing to the community through volunteering. Dr. Hill, members of the board, I present to you Alexa Banbury. All right. Last but not least, the Academic Excellence Award goes to Sam Garcia. Sam is a dedicated student athlete and active community member at Windsor High School, passionate about his academic excellence, athletics, and leadership. Throughout his high school career, he has strived for balance, excelling both in the classroom and on the field, while also contributing to his high school community through extracurriculars. Academically, Sam has pursued a rigorous course load, having taken a total of seven AP classes, earning A-plus grades in all classes up through his junior year. His academic achievements have earned multiple recognitions, including awards in Algebra II, English 10, Precalculus, and Calculus, as well as distinction by the National Hispanic Recognition Program. Additionally, he has received the Yale University Book Award, the RPI Medal, and the J. Lim Scholarship Prize in Math for his outstanding work in mathematics. Athletically, Sam has been a committed member of several varsity teams. Varsity Cross-Country Runner, he has had the honor of competing at the state conference meet, where his team placed fourth. In swimming and diving, he has been a varsity member for all three of his high school years, for three of his four high school years, earning senior captain status and qualifying for the state opens. Additionally, he participated in outdoor track, where Sam has run all four years and helped his team qualify for the Nike Nationals in the 4x800 relay. Throughout his athletic career, he has been recognized as a member of the All-Academic Team in all three sports. Outside of athletics, Sam is deeply involved in music and leadership activities. He has been a cellist in the American Strings Teacher Association, the ASTA Honors Orchestra, where he has performed as the front stand cellist. He also has participated in Music in the Parks through his junior year. As a leader, he has served as the CT State Treasurer for the Technology Student Association, TSA, in both his junior and senior years, where he has led and helped his team achieve first place in engineering design. In addition to his extracurriculars, Sam is a member of the Superintendent's Student Senate, where he collaborates with peers and district officials to improve our school community. He also works and is trained as a lifeguard for Windsor Recreation and serves as a teaching assistant for AP Biology, helping fellow students navigate complex scientific concepts. Sam hopes to leverage his diverse experiences to contribute to success of the communities he is a part of and pursue his interest in the future. With a passion for learning, leadership, and community involvement, Sam is excited to continue his academic and athletic pursuits while making a meaningful impact on those around him. Dr. Hill and members of the board, I present to you Sam Garcia.
And one more. So, I want to thank Principal Jorgensen and Dr. Parker again, and all of our honorees. Let's give them one more round of applause. I never stop saying it, and I won't stop saying it, when people talk about Windsor and Windsor kids. I have over 22 years now connected to this town. This is why I moved my family here. This is what we produce over and over again. And I won't let anybody talk about Windsor. You guys are bad people. It's president's yours.
Thank you. We're going to go on to the next order of business. So, everybody here, you're welcome to to stay or to... With all the academic work these kids have, I know they have to get home.
Thank you for your leadership and your support.
Thank you, everyone, for your...
The next order of business is our audience to visitor. And Ms. Daly, can you read your script?
Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q&amp;A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking Ray's hand or dialing *9 within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Thank you. And just for those who are here who are speaking in the boardroom, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Ms. Taylor will raise a red card briefly. And then at the three-minute mark, she'll raise it again and continue to hold that. And at that point, please finish up your remarks. For those who may be calling in or may not be able to see, Ms. Taylor, at the three-minute mark, she will interrupt your speaking to let you know to finish up. First, we're going to do the boardroom. Is there anybody in the boardroom who would like to address the board? Please sign in, give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sharon Gothier. I live on 142 Sunnyfield Drive in Windsor. We have a wonderful group of children that I saw tonight. So, I'm here tonight to talk about protecting them. So, I've lived in Windsor for 60 years. I went through Windsor High School. I got married here. My children went through the school. My son, the other night, who was visiting from Florida, actually discussed with me how he loved the fact that he lived in a community that was culturally diverse. And I really appreciated that conversation, especially since I was coming tonight. So, David and Paul have been on the board, I think, since the start of Windsor's town, a very long time. And like I said, I've lived here a very long time, and I care about this town. I was the first person to be in the Junior Women's Club. I belong to the...
Excuse me, please finish up your remarks.
Okay, so I belong to the Women's Club. I'm part of the Chamber in town because I'm in business. So I ask you, please, if you need a committee, I'll be happy to do that. I'm very good at that. I have two master's degrees. I'm happy to chair the committee. But I seriously ask all of you to please protect all of those wonderful children tonight that came up.
Thank you for your remarks.
So thank you. I don't get an applause.
Maybe you didn't pass seven AP classes. I don't know. Is there anybody else in the boardroom who would like to address the board? Seeing none, is there anybody online with a hand raised or interested in commenting?
There is an attendee with their hand raised. You are now unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, yes. So my name is Danae Saunders, and last week I attended a local event with the mayor and two state representatives, and I heard the concerns about workforce development and how a lot of high schoolers are basically not really, not necessarily not considering college, but are interested in things that you don't necessarily have to go to college for, and how Windsor is trying to build up those programs. And I wanted to offer that I am a certified health and wellness coach and a business consultant, and I hosted four workshops in Windsor between last year and this year for vision boards, wellness workshops. I also hosted a Millionaire Men Business Conference where I had a real estate agent, and I also had a wealth strategist and a business advisor, and I just wanted to propose maybe the idea of bringing a wellness and vision board workshop to help the students really see their vision before they graduate high school because I know that often after high school is just automatically college instead of focusing on their passions. So I think it would be a good idea, or possibly a great idea, to impact the students with the opportunity to make a vision board and mix it with wellness to prepare them for workforce development, even if that includes college, just giving them the opportunity to really express their passions, and I can network them with people who I know who are industry leaders across the state of Connecticut to do so as well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Ms. Daly, that would like to address the board?
There are no additional hands raised.
Last call for people in the boardroom. Okay, without objection from the rest of the board, I'll close. Audience to visitor. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before we have a motion, is there any items that anybody wants pulled? Seeing none, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, President Fury. I move the Board of Education approve consent agenda items for a financial report, for B enrollment report, for C food service report, and for D human resources report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries 9-0-0. Next item is the approval of minutes. Mr. Lockhart.
Move the Board of Education approve the minutes of October 16, 2024, regular meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos.
Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries 9-0-0. Next item is our student report. Victor, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to start off with the Windsor High School String Orchestra. On October 28, eight talented students from Windsor High School were selected to perform at the prestigious Connecticut American String Teachers Association Orchestra held at the University of Hartford's Millard Auditorium. The event brought together 60 string musicians from schools across Connecticut. The honored orchestra performed Astor Piazzolla's Otoño Portano, Brahms' Hungarian Dance, Number Five, Tel Borgo's Dance Infernal, and Carlos Gardes's Por Una Cabeza. The performance showcased students' exceptional abilities and dedication to their craft. This opportunity allowed the Windsor High School musicians to collaborate with some of the state's best young string players, highlighting the strength of our school's music program. Second, the end of quarter one celebration. October 30 marked the end of the first quarter at Windsor High School. Students were treated to a special celebration to recognize their hard work. We had a Dunkin' food truck offering free beverage samples to students during all lunch waves. The event also included games and photo spots for students to enjoy. To top off the celebration, all students received $5 Dunkin' gift cards and had the chance to win Dunkin' Tubblers and a raffle. Third, the arts department. On November 8, 32 students from different art classes attended, visited New York City for a day of contemporary art exploration. The trip began with a visit to the High Line, where students conducted research and participated in discussions on public art installations. AP art students led the group in analyzing the works on display. The group then toured the Whitney Museum of American Art, experiencing the edges of Ailey's exhibition. Its retrospective celebrated Alvin Ailey's life and legacy alongside works by other artists such as Jean Michel Basquiat, Kara Walker, Alma Thomas, and others. The museum docents were particularly impressed by the level of participation and critical thinking demonstrated by high school students. On November 9, Barts hosted Fall Into the Arts from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The event showcased a wide variety of student talent and creativity with participation from the art, music, and English departments. The event featured performances by the chamber choir, Teens of Praise Gospel Choir, jazz band, orchestra, and student soloists, along with original poetry writing by creative writing students. Mr. Nolan DJed for the event, keeping the energy high with music and dancing. Art students set up booths to sell original handmade crafts, including ceramics, jewelry, ink-printed bags, crochet items, and stickers. They also offered face painting for kids. Proceeds will go directly to the art department's scholarship fund. The crowd was amazing, and everyone, including Barts, is excited for next year. Fourth, the debate team. On November 1, the high school debate team attended the great debate between Howard University and Yale University at the First Cathedral in Bloomfield. This event provided our debaters with the opportunity to observe the strategies and techniques of parliamentary debate, including argumentation, rebuttal, and cross-examination. In its second year since reviving the program, the high school debate team is working to establish a strong foundation. Washing elite debaters in action offered valuable takeaways that will help refine the team's performance in upcoming competitions. On November 9, four Windsor High School teams, one varsity and three novice, competed at Fitch High School in Groton. Our debaters are making remarkable strides, consistently improving and achieving higher rankings this season. Fifth, Veterans Day. On November 11, Windsor High School held a Veterans Day celebration to honor and recognize the brave men and women who have served our country. The program featured powerful performances by the string orchestra, the combined choirs, and the marching band, whose music created an uplifting and respectful atmosphere for the occasion. Students also heard the oral histories of two local WWII veterans. The event also included the knockout game, led by Mr. Marinelli, which puts focus on the importance of following orders and maintaining discipline. He principles a military service. As Mr. Marinelli concluded the event, he shared a powerful reflection. Service means different things to every veteran. It's one of the things that makes honoring veterans so meaningful. It's not just about sharing a uniform, but about the personal journeys and sacrifices that make up their stories. Sixth, Forgotten by the Drama Club. The Windsor High School Drama Club took to stage on November 15 and 16 with their performance of Forgotten, a reimagined version of Peter Pan by A. Gural. Audiences were drawn into the story, enjoying a fresh, engaging twist on the beloved classic. The play explores memories, themes of memories, imagination, and the boundary between reality and fantasy, pulling the audience into a world where dreams and reality collide. The two-day performance drew over 400 attendees. The program, the production showcased students' remarkable talents, from the stand-up performances of the lead actors to the set design and lighting that brought Neverland to life. Congratulations to Ms. Jackson and her talented cast and crew for their exceptional work in bringing the fresh take on Peter Pan to the stage. Seventh, the athletics department. The Windsor Warriors football team is aiming for their 10th win after a dominant 47-14 victory over Berlin last Friday. Currently ranked first with a perfect 9-0 record, the Warriors have firmly established themselves as the team to beat this season. They're set to face Bloomfield at Phil Rubin Stadium this Saturday, the 23rd, in what promises to be another exciting matchup. The Unified Sports season is kicking off this November. Windsor High School is excited to offer various inclusive sports opportunities for all students. This season, our school will feature three sports: basketball, cornhole, and golf. Unified sports creates an environment where athletes of all abilities come together to promote teamwork, inclusivity, and fun competition. We're especially excited to introduce the Pilot Golf Team this season, which will offer a new experience for our athletes. The full schedule for games and events will be shared soon. Lastly, EKGs for Eli. The EKG used for Eli screening event held this afternoon at Windsor High School was a success, attracting a solid turnout of local student athletes. This free screening launched memory of Eli Rivera, organized in partnership with Ina Heartbeat and Always 65, aimed to identify potential heart conditions in young athletes aged 8 to 18. The screening was designed to promote awareness and early detection of heart conditions that could put our young athletes at risk, offering peace of mind to families and providing critical information for ensuring the safety of youth sports participants. That's all for November. As we approach this season of gratitude, I want to thank all of you for dedication and leadership. Your contributions and partnership have been instrumental to our ongoing growth. Wishing you all a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Victor. Always such a thorough report. Any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Taylor?
We shouldn't go. We shouldn't. Windsor High, yeah, so I'm just going to say ditto marks when it's our turn because you do such a great job. I feel like I was there every single time. I really wanted to lift the EKGs for Eli, and this could be for yourself or, I don't know, I know Mr. Fulton is here, so through you, Dr. Hill. Could we, just for the listening public through you, President Fury, just share a bit more about that for the listening public that may not have known that was going on and what that was really about, if we could?
Can he talk loud enough that we can actually hear him? Please.
Okay, so I'm going to address that again. I talked loud enough. I'm sorry you don't hear me, but I'm not going to be speaking, so hold tight, please. Thank you. It's a public meeting. Mr. Fulton, could you please go up and explain? Thank you. I want to make sure we keep...
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good. So it was a success. It was an initiative brought to me by Mr. Rivera somewhere in probably August of this year. We wanted to support the Rivera family. We knew that was a part of their grieving process. It also allowed for us to identify some students who may have some kind of underlying condition. So in conjunction with Ina Heartbeat, which was an organization out of New Haven, Mr. Rivera brought that to us. We worked with Mike Papale, who was a person who kind of experienced that with his son as well. I met another older guy today, young to me, but named Artie, who had similar experiences with their sons and daughters, and so it's a passion for them to bring that forward. So for those of us in the community who didn't know about it, we'll continue to have initiatives like this to make sure that our, ensure that our, or not ensure, but to make sure we do the best we can for the safety of our kids. So if there's any questions, I can ask them if that's appropriate.
Any questions for Mr. Fulton? No, but I did see a clip on TV as well, and it was great to see Eli's dad there and several of the football players who played with him, who are still, luckily, still playing on the field for us, so with the number-one team in the state of Connecticut.
The Warriors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Warriors.
Anybody, any other thing for Victor? Because I know Victor probably needs to get home. So thank you, Victor, for your report. Next item on the agenda is the president's report. I attended many events at Barts, the new Barts is... In fact, I was there today, but not with a school event. I attended Project Graduation fundraiser that was there, and it was great to see the support and the start of fundraising for Project Graduation. On the 11th, I attended the Veterans Day programs at both Paquannick and JFK. I saw Ms. Cantor at JFK. We sat together. And at Paquannick, I went around the room and thanked the veterans, but also for some who hadn't done it, hadn't participated before, kind of gave them the story of how in Windsor, it's just not another day off that people may not remember. It's an opportunity for teachers to be talking during the week as it gets closer about what Veterans Day is about. And at Paquannick, they parade around, all the kids are in the hallways waving American flags, and the veterans got to wave around, and they were given cards by the students that were there. They also had the opportunity to go into a classroom and read a book about Veterans Day, age-appropriate for K through 2. I know Mr. Madison was at Sage Park. Thank you, Mr. Madison, for doing that, and thank you for your service. I attended Dr. Hill's coffee talk also at Barts, along with Mr. Madison and Mr. Lockhart, and a very lively crowd that was there with some good discussions and good questions. Ms. Taylor, Mr. Panos, and I attended the Service Awards Dinner at McNeely's on November 13. It's always a great event and wonderful to celebrate the milestones of all the staff in the district. November, this past Friday/Saturday, I was at the CAE CAPS convention. Dr. Hill was there, and Dr. Haiti was there, and I think Danielle may try to gotten there.
So, thank you very, Victor, for your report. Next item on the agenda is the president's report. I attended many events at Barts, the New Barts is a in fact, I was there today, but not with a school event. I attended Project Graduation fundraiser that was there, and it was great to see the support and the start of fundraising for Project Graduation. On the eleventh, I attended the Veterans Day programs at both Paquonic and JFK. I saw Ms. Cantor at JFK, we sat together. And at Paquonic, I went around the room and thanked the veterans, but also for some who hadn't done it, hadn't participated before, kinda gave them the story of how in Windsor, it's just not another day off that people may not remember. It's an opportunity for teachers to be talking during the week, as it gets closer, about what Veterans Day is about. And for the, at Paquonic, they parade around, all the kids are in the hallways waving American flags, and the veterans got to wave around, and they were given cards by the students that were there. They also had the opportunity to go into a classroom and read a book about Veterans Day, age-appropriate for K through two. I know Mr. Madison was at Sage Park, thank you, Mr. Madison, for doing that, and thank you for your service. I attended Dr. Hill's coffee talk also at Barts, along with Mr. Madison and Mr. Lockhart, and a very lively crowd that was there with some good discussions and good questions. Ms. Taylor, Mr. Panos, and I attended the Service Awards Dinner at McNeely's on November thirteenth. It's always a great event and wonderful to celebrate the milestones of all the staff in the district. November, this past Friday, Saturday, I was at the CAE CAPS convention. Dr. Hill was there, and Dr. Haiti was there, and I think Danielle may try to gotten there, but had a little issue. It was held in Groton, Connecticut, and Windsor was well-represented. Board was well-represented. The board received a Board of Distinction Award, and I will defer to the CAE President, Mr. Lockhart, to go into more detail. He seemed to be everywhere in the couple days there, so I'm sure he got a lot of steps in. Mr. Lockhart, if you could elaborate.
Mr. President, thank you. First off, just wanna say thank you to the board members that made it down to the CAE Convention. I wanna thank Dr. Hill and Ms. Gill for their presentation during the conference about communication and telling your story and about our social media and how we're engaged in the community and showing that it's just not Windsor that's recognizing what we're doing, but that the podcasts, the stuff that Dr. Haiti is doing, it's recognized across the planet, and they had data to demonstrate that. So Windsor's actually telling its story, and we continue to tell our story since 2017 with the CAE Distinction Awards as one of the few districts in the state that actually performing at a high functioning level, despite what people may think. So again, we will continue to do what we need to do. I also wanna thank Ms. Gill. I actually saw the presentation when I got re-elected president of CAE, and there's two big video screens, and I never get to see what's on the screen because I'm always facing the audience. And I saw the actual presentation this year, and I was very, very humbled by it, so thank you very much for that. I did not know anything about that. But overall, the board was definitely engaged. I know Ms. Taylor was part of the Nutmeg Board presentation, which is a two-hour workshop on how not to be a board of education. And it really, really goes into the abject leadership skills that are often on display and how not to go down these paths and to protect yourself in the district legally. So overall, it was a great conference. Mr. President, Mr. Vice, and Madam Vice President were there for delegate assembly. Went really, really fast, I got right through the business, but overall, it was a good time. It was good to network with people around the state. It was good to see Mr. Panos having an extremely great time. He was very, very cordial and
He got the best dancer award, I'd say.
Mr. Panos, Mr. Panos celebrated like it was nineteen ninety-nine. So it was amazing, but overall, it was an amazing time. And again, personally, I just wanna thank Windsor for supporting me, for being CAE President. This is my final year before I step away. But overall, it's been an amazing ride to support the districts across the state. And I just want the listening community to understand, as well as the employees of Windsor Public Schools, Windsor's looked upon as a leader in a lot of spaces in this state. And there's a lot of people that would love our talent and always trying to come for our talent. And the good thing is, we do a good job in growing talent, and then they go to other places and be great. So Windsor, thank you for everything that you do, in spite of the fact that there might be a lot of naysayers here and there. We don't say thank you enough, so again, I just wanna say to every single employee, Dr. Hill, that's under your leadership, as well as to you, sir, thank you for everything you do for Windsor Public Schools.
One of the it was on Saturday, and by Saturday, a number of people have left, especially the last workshop of the day. And Leonard moderated that, Mr. Lockhart moderated that, and actually realized he had a a former softball teammate who's, I guess, is he chief of police?
He was a former lieutenant commander with the State Police when we played, and now he's the chief of Canton Police.
Canton Police. And the good thing about this workshop on school safety was, as I was listening to what Canton did, I realized most of what Canton's doing, we're doing. So, you know, at least we're consistent with a group that's been, was asked to come and present that workshop. So to folks who are watching here, we're doing the best we can, there's always room for improvement, but it's great to see a lot of the best practices that they talked about we're doing here in Windsor. Any question about my report or comments from CAE? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I wanted to lift, we were sitting through the keynote, and the keynote speaker was Dr. Timothy Shriver, looking just like a Kennedy. And that was the joke of the day. And he did a really amazing workshop, technically about social-emotional learning, and he was talking, he was walking us through the whole thing, and the whole time, I'm like, we do that. We do that, we do that, and people are like feverishly taking notes, and it's just crazy to see that this is, it's catching on, but we've been doing it. So as we're walking around CAE and, you know, superintendents and boards of education and chairs and vice chair are engaging with us, they're always picking our brain because of the fact that we're getting a lot, and I mean, a lot of press and just the scuttlebug across the nation in the educational spaces, is talking about stuff that we've already done. And so I just really wanna reiterate that, that we have this amazing keynote speaker who's, you know, the, what is he, the CEO of Special Olympics and all of that. And he was walking everybody through things that we are already doing, so I just, it felt really good to know that we're already there. So shout out to Dr. Michael Valerie and all of the folks that really put it to practice. But I really feel like it was an opportunity because speaking to other boards of education and superintendents maybe will actually catch on to do these practices in our lives, not just with children, so I'll just leave that there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next item is school liaison reports. First is Windsor High School.
It's hard to go after him, but one thing that, he didn't lift, but you mentioned the Project Graduation fundraiser. So I'll just take it a step further, because not only am I liaison to Windsor High School, but I'm also a mom of a senior. So I have to shout out the parents and the committee for Project Graduation. Just for the listening public, it takes about twelve thousand dollars to run a successful and fun event for our seniors and for folks that don't know what Project Graduation is. It's a safe and fun way to keep the students after graduation, you know, engaged, having fun, so they're not all over the place and everywhere. Again, safe, safe, safe. So again, it takes around twenty, twelve thousand dollars to run a successful and fun event, and it takes a village. So if you want to get involved, your organization, or if you want to volunteer that night or be on a committee and you're a parent or anyone in the community, please email projectgraduationwindsortgmail.org. We need all hands on deck so that we can continue this going. Twenty-five years ago, I graduated from Windsor High, and I know it seems crazy because I'm twenty-nine, but we had, like, we had a blast, and, you know, our reunion is coming up and the whole thing, and it's one of those nights that you just don't forget. So we wanna make sure that we can continue that tradition here in the town. So please, if you have something that you can donate or you wanna get involved, please do. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, I guess I'll be tripling down on it at this point, since we've already doubled down. But I just wanna lift again the EKGs for Eli. And I was, as you guys were speaking before, I was like, hmm, am I gonna violate my own HIPAA? I guess why not? So when I was in high school, I went to the pediatrician one day, and I figured out through my doctor that I had a slight arrhythmia. And I was sent into the hospital for stress tests and EKGs and all these things to see if I would be able to compete in athletics. So I understand, because oftentimes, we hear so many things about students who are playing at, like, playing sports, and then they just, they just drop on the fields immediately. So I think that's such an amazing initiative, and it's something that touches very near home for me as well. I mean, although I haven't really had any issues with it, my whole entire life, I've been able to be active, I work out all the time, and I'm fine, but it is special to me to know that we are a district that's supporting something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the Windsor High School reps? Okay, we're gonna go on to Sage Park. Mr. Panos?
Thank you. Sage Park PTO held October thirtieth, the meeting at Barts. That was a great time. Ms. Jorgensen knew where she was going. Well-intended, compared to the past. You seemed to be quite enthusiastic, don't forget, you know, interest in this sort of thing drops off, you know. You get a lot of enthusiasm when you're down, when you're second graders and even, you know, third, fourth, fifth, but, you know, as you get to middle school, you know, the students, the parents say, well, you know, they're getting older. But they were, they were very good. Make sure somebody can hear. All right, the November eleventh, we held a Veterans Day celebration, and we had two veterans, one, Staff Sergeant, gave his story. But we also had James Madison, he was a veteran, and he gave a kind of a lesson for this. He gave them, it was almost a little lesson in how sometimes the smaller of the adversaries in a war, the smaller will sometimes win. And this, and so he gave some historical examples that was very interesting. The, you know, already mentioned, I'll just say that tomorrow, we're gonna tend to go to the National Junior Honor Society induction, which will be held tomorrow sixth, or there should be about forty eighth graders in there, so we saw a few of them here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Yeah, the only thing to add to that is there is another PTO meeting on the twentieth, which is tomorrow, at six PM in the Sage Park Library. So keeping that enthusiasm going is really nice to see, I think, and so if you can make it, that's great. But that's it, other than that, I think Paul covered it.
Any questions for Sage Park? Okay, the next school, Clover Street School, Mr. Madison?
Yes, Mrs. Lee and I met, things are under control, right? We got it. Thank you. What man?
My kind of guy.
Very good. Any questions for Clover, the extensive report from Mr. Madison?
Are things under control?
Things are under control.
You go to Barts?
Next, we have John F. Kennedy School. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I attended the Veterans Day Assembly on November eleventh. All the staff and students did a superb job honoring all the veterans for that day, and the ones that were there, I saw Dr. Hill there, and I saw you, Mr. Fury, and I saw Dr. Haiti, thank you. And the students wrote note cards for veterans who are at the VA Hospital in Newington. They also held a PTO meeting that night, and the students are continuing their recycling projects. And JFK needs to have more parents join the PTO to carry it forward, less parents are participating, so they really need that. And grade four went to the Connecticut Museum on the twelfth, thirteenth, and the fourteenth. Today and tomorrow, students went to Northwest Park. On Monday, December second, is Picture Retake Day. The next PTO meeting is December second. December fourth, fifth, and sixth are early dismissals due to parent-teacher conferences, and they'll be holding the Scholastic Book Fair December fourth and sixth from nine to three. And they're not sure if they're gonna hold it that Friday night, they're looking for parents to work the Scholastic Book Fair. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for JFK? Ms. Taylor?
Ms. Cantor, can you share the link to sign up for volunteering for the book fair with the board at another time?
Don't, yeah, at another time, thanks, I don't have it with me, thanks.
Oh, not me.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Next, we have Oliver Ellsworth School. Mr. Lockhart?
Be as quick as Mr. Madison. OE had their PTO meeting last night. Picture Retake Day is on December third, based off of my understanding. And it's my understanding on the fourth, fifth, and sixth of December is parent-teacher conferences as well. And finally, the HVAC project is going quite well, I'm still going up there. Tuesdays at one-thirty, getting on the roof and kicking the tires and making sure everything is going well. So I believe we're in a good place, and they're going through the punch list. But right now, the building's in, it's very favorable in there compared to a year ago. So just wanna again thank Dr. Hill, you and your team and town facilities. Definitely wanna thank publicly Carlos and all the maintenance people and Tom, the lead janitor at Onsite, for the great job they've done to really, really turn that building around and work with Mr. Rubin and his staff to really, really just build the morale back up in the building. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for OE? Next, we have Paquonic School. Mr. Hellick?
Thank you. Paquonic School also has parent-teacher conferences coming up from December fourth through the sixth. The PTO Scholastic Book Fair is also coming up December second through the sixth. The next PTO meeting will be on December second, from six to seven PM in the library. The pre-K turkey pokey performance is next week, November twenty-sixth, at two-thirty PM. And finally, Paquonic had a successful Veterans Day event with an assembly, a parade, and veterans reading books to students, so it was a great event all around. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Paquonic? Okay, next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. President. So most of my announcements, as usual, have been brought up, but I am going to stress a couple here. So on Wednesday, November thirteenth, we held our annual service awards celebration, recognizing all of our employees from ten years and higher on five-year increments. It's always a great experience, and those who, the honorees, were very pleased and they felt special, which is the comments that I received from a number of them. So I was really glad that we continued to do that for them. And also, this is a big deal because this speaks to the, not only longevity of folks, but their commitment to working and staying in Windsor Public Schools. So with that, I'd like to give a special shout-out to Danielle Batshelder and her team. They're the ones who put it all together, and it was just a great event. Last this past weekend, we had the CAE Conference, as was mentioned. So I wanna specifically shout out my communications coordinator, Ms. Gianna Gill. She presented on Friday about transforming communication. So I presented with her, but I was just her flavor-flave and just throw in little, you know, extra hip-hop comments, like, yeah! But she did a wonderful job, I had never presented with her, so I was watching. But, you know, just the feedback that I received from some colleagues and board members, it was, you know, very, very positive. And again, you know, I say it, it sounds different, I know, right? Dr. Hill's being all arrogant about Windsor, so it was kinda nice to hear you guys say it, but I am gonna be arrogant right now about Windsor. Because Gianna, I just don't care. So we're doing a lot of things, and I'm gonna keep saying that. I know folks like to really focus on all the negative, but that's society, I understand that. And we're gonna continue to work to fix things, whatever it may be. But as I said when I took over in this role, we're gonna talk about all the great things that Windsor does, because the great does outweigh everything else. And our communications programming is something that is not just local or state, it's worldwide at this point, and folks are paying attention. I've been on the other side of the country, and people are like, hey, I heard your podcast. I don't even listen to my podcast after I tape it, but these folks are listening. It's not about Terrell Hill, it's about Windsor Public Schools, the students, the staff, the parents in the community, the businesses in the community, the things that they're doing to promote why Windsor is a great place to be. The coffee talk that folks mentioned, we were at, I call it the New Barts. I went there this summer, I love it, and we're gonna have another coffee talk there. It was a great space, so I think it's twofold. When I've talked to some friends about it over the weekend, not only do, you know, I get to have my conversations with the community, which I prefer over, you know, sending letters, newsletters, and my principal's probably looking at me. I've never been the newsletter guy, I like talking to people. But we also get to promote a local business. You know, schools should be integrated and enmeshed in their town, you should be promoting your town. It's not just the school and then the town, we're one town. And everything we do and everything we have has an impact. When we go to recruit people, what do you have in your town that makes someone want to actually come to that school district? And not just come to the parking lot of the school and go home, they may shop in that town, they may choose to move there, and they may want to dine there. So I wanna always make sure that people are So I want to always make sure that people understand that we are completely enmeshed and we work together here in Windsor. My next coffee talk, with that being said, will be Tuesday, December 17th at 10:00 AM and it's going to be here in the LP Wilson Boardroom. All schools and district offices will be closed on Wednesday, November 27th through Friday, November 29th. Happy Thanksgiving to all of our families, staff, and community members. And at this time, Mr. President, I'm going to call Chief Operating Officer Danielle Batshelder to speak to our budget assumptions for the first reading.
President? Mr. Lockhart?
As Finance Chairman, I move the Board of Education, except for a first reading, the budget assumptions for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. All those in favor?
Mr. President, if I may, before I speak, I would like for Ms. Batshelder to give some overview and then I'll bring some context afterwards.
Thank you. So we do this every year. We do a first reading and a second reading for budget, going into the next school year for budget assumptions. So, so just so everyone knows, the budget assumptions went to all principals and administrators about a week and a half ago. They are feverishly working on their 25, 26 budgets and those are due back to me at the beginning of December of this school year. First up is enrollment. Our enrollment, as you can see, has remained pretty flat throughout the years. One thing that I did want to bring up though is our October 1 numbers are always lower than our May, February, June of that following year's numbers. So in my personal opinion, I, I just think it's a little insignificant at times to use that October 1. I know we have to do it for the state, but whenever there is a drop, there's never that drop come year end. So we are going to push through like we have the same type of enrollment that we have this year for next year. Staffing and programs, our principals know that we are status quo. We are, as Dr. Hady has said many times, we are not adding additional things. We are doing what we currently do and just doing it better. So to the addition of any major programs, we're not anticipating or any staffing changes at this point. Our health insurance, unfortunately, we have had a significant number of high claimants this past summer. We definitely hit a, a high note with that, to the point that, you know, I was on the phone with Mr. Souza and Jim Bork because our insurance fund was depleting fast with some of these claims with individuals. So at this point, we are steady. However, because of that large increase over a short amount of time, that is going to affect our projections and our rates going forward. Because they always go back 12 to 14 months when they do the enrollment, or excuse me, when they do the projections. Our state and federal grants are remaining consistent. We are projecting for Title I, an average of 1.91% increase. An IDEA, a 2.82% increase. So I just like to point out, because this is what happened last year, we had to actually take certain individuals out of the budget and put, out of the grant budget and put them into general fund because, as you can see, 1.91% and 2.82% is still not even where we are within the times for increases in salaries. So that's kind of what we're always fighting against. However, I'm hopeful that the increase that we had last year for this line item only will be able to stay flat and not have to look at more increases to move any more people out of grant into general fund for next year. Energy is as it has been. You know, sooner we lock in rates, the better. This is done by the Town of Windsor. I actually don't really get involved. I'm told pretty much when they lock in, but I do know that they do use a consortium when they do this. So it's not just the Town of Windsor in isolation, it is a consortium with a lot of other towns and districts. Facilities, our physical plant manager will be meeting with all of our principals to go over the needs and wants of each building and also he will, Carlos Rosario, will put what he believes the needs for the district are on top of what the principals request. Transportation through Daco, our 25, 26 increase is 3.9% and our, which equates to about 221,000. Our special ed transportation is through Haven and Daco, so it is a combination. So more to come on that. We are trending on the high side for special ed transportation due to just the number of students we transport. And lastly, the diesel fuel and gas, we locked in a price of 2.72 a gallon for 24, 25. And the lock-in for gas for 2024 is currently 2.60. Both Jim Bork and I are projecting and budgeting diesel at $3.50 and we're actually doing the same for gas, $3.50. So with that increase, it's a little over 108,000 increase for that line item.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Batshelder or comments? Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, it's, I guess, something I just want to put to bed, right? So someone I know is a good friend of the comptroller and says that Windsor is on a shortlist of districts that would benefit from switching to the state's health insurance plan. Is this true or is this not true? I believe you guys may have punched the numbers a while back.
So actually, we were in teacher negotiations recently. That's all I'm going to say at this point. Next meeting, we'll talk more about that in executive session and then bring it out to full session. However, we ran the numbers and that's absolutely not accurate. We would be at increase of over 16% and that was not favored by our consultant as well as the teacher's consultant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. I will go to a vote at this point. Motion was made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos regarding the budget assumptions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Extention, motion carries 9-0-0. Next item is.
I'll read it. Then he's going to do it.
I move the Board of Education to approve the proposed changes to the Windsor High School 2025, 2026 program of studies as a second reading.
I'll second the motion. Motion made by Mr. Lockhart?
No.
No, sorry. By Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
To accept program of studies for a second reading. Discussion.
I have a, I have a substitute motion.
Yep, Mr. Panos?
I'm sorry, I move to make a substitute motion. The board consider all but the American Studies course for approval of the program of studies. The American Studies course being considered for approval at a future meeting after review by the board.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Motion made by Mr. Panos, seconded by Mr. Halleck to the substitute motion to approve all of the program of studies except, accepting the American Studies program at this time. Discussion, Mr. Panos?
Yes, I sent in a, an email regarding the particular course. What I'm suggesting is that it needs some change. I had the opportunity to talk to the head of the ECE program at, at the CAPE Conference, that's Mr. Chris Todd, and he said that, that it can be modified if you, if you want to, you can add to it, but you have to have the minimum that is in there. So I think that it, I couldn't, I, from the explanation that was given, I don't know how much is in there regarding especially the issue of the so-called Red Scare, the particular unit that we discussed. Now, I'm willing to entertain if, you know, if it's, if all those items that I've listed in an email which I sent today are covered, well then I'll, I'll accept it, the course. But this is, this was, as it's noted in there, a highly contentious issue, the so-called Red Scare. And it is therefore something that could be considered as, you know, if it's, if it's too one-sided for it, and it seemed to be, at least the appearance, that it would be, wouldn't be quite, you know, an education or an education of history, but simply advocating a specific position. And I don't think that's what we want for our students. And I, I covered a number of topics in that email for, you know, criticisms. And so if, you know, if staff here can address those and clear them up, then I'd be willing to go along with it. But otherwise, I think that it takes, it should take further study, especially, you know, with the literature part of it being so, the, the play, The Crucible. Now, this was, it was quite, you know, this is a common thing to, to read and it's interesting and all that. However, it is highly partisan in its view. And so if the students are receiving that and that is the theme of that second unit, then I think it's an, it's an error and that there's something missing. And what can fill it is, well, along the lines of the items that I, I brought up. If, if the history part of the course, you know, counteracts that and points out that it's not just two sides, there are a number of objective facts that went on during that period. So with that, I assume Ms. Feynman has that and that this can be addressed here today. If you need more on it, what I'm talking about, of course, is the issue of such things as the, is the giving up or the stealing of the secrets, the atomic bomb. Now, you know, as someone raised in the 50s and 60s, this was a real issue. You know, we also, you know, this, the Cuban Missile Crisis, we had entire Eastern Europe turned over for no reason. There were, was all sorts of Soviet activity going on and this is the crux of this, this difference. We had people who have certain sympathies and this is what ended up in the so-called Red Scare, with people calling it Red Scare, and pretending that it was just some sort of witch hunt. Well, it wasn't a witch hunt. It was, it was fact that these, these two, House and American Activities Committee and the, and the senatorial hearings by Joe McCarthy, you know, were, were central to these things. They were, they, they were trying to find out why all these things were happening and they found, of course, that precisely, that there were many things that were turned over for no good reason, just turned over. And we had, you know, they had the Rosenbergs and they had Alger Hiss and, and there was, a number of, of things that, that were corroborated. We've had the Vanona files that were finally uncovered in the, in, you know, taken out of confidentiality of, you know, and, you know, made public. These were secret, these were secret codes that were, that were broken and corroborated many of the accusations that were made by these two committees. Now, you know, and I know this is all history, but this is what we're doing. And the question is, what do you teach, how do you teach this? There has to be a balance in a course like this. And that's, that's the reason why I think it's important. So with that, if staff can answer these questions, I'd be glad to entertain them. Otherwise, I'd like to have this postponed.
I'm going to, I'm going to just address a procedural issue first.
I was going to ask you a procedural question, so thank you.
Yes, and then, you know, I'll pass it over to Ms. Feynman, maybe she can shed some light. So I think what we're currently trying to do right now is approve the program of study as a course. There is a different platform for approving curriculum or for providing suggestions and feedback for curriculum. I think all your, your feedback is very curriculum specific. And at this point, the, the current syllabus that we have in place has been approved by UConn and that is what we are currently teaching. So we're, we're seeking permission, approval to run the course again next year. That's what the program of study is. However, any curriculum feedback will gladly take and we'll discuss with our, you know, our professionals who are actually history majors, who are working in collaboration with our UConn professors, to see if it is something that they would like to add in the, in the syllabus for the following year. But I think right now it's just, we cannot change the curriculum at this point.
Well, I'm not asking to, to change this year's curriculum.
So even for next year, that would not be happening right now. So we have to get the course approved to run and then we can look into your feedback in terms of curriculum.
So it's possible, if I just make sure I understand, that we could, we could approve the program, let's say we approve the program of studies, it would still potentially have opportunity for feedback on Mr. Panos's suggestions. And eventually, the board could vote whether we add these things or not add these things.
No, so ECE, just like all our ECE classes and our AP classes, they do not go through curriculum committee. So this is not a curriculum that the board approves. It's different from our own curriculum that we write. We get it approved through a committee and then it comes back for a full board approval. The board approves ECE and AP classes as a class with the understanding that people who are writing and approving the curriculum for those classes are experts. So we work with UConn professors, we work with history majors, we work with experts who know, I will say more than me, than anybody else in this room, that know the content and know what we're trying to prepare kids to be ready for when they move on to college. So that's what, that's where that curriculum question comes in place. But we will gladly take feedback, just like we always do, and we will make sure that as our teachers and Ms. Feynman works with our UConn professor, to, if possible, to incorporate that feedback.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Dr. Hady, because I was trying to, I was trying to figure out through all this, like, when did anybody on this board audit this course? Because I, I don't recall that happening. And then I wanted to also know, when did folks get credentials in, in history? Because it just seems like a lot of, it feels like a lot of micromanagement and, and, and if you don't feel like this might have gone that way. First of all, I wasn't there, so I don't know. But I also believe that we need to be careful about micromanaging, you know, things down to what it sits right with you personally. So I just want to put that out there, as I did in writing, to respond to Mr. Panos's question to the Executive Committee and the Cabinet.
Anyone else, but first, first time around? Mr. Wallaston I saw and then Ms. Cantor.
Yes, I believe he expressed concerns valid to his truth and I'd be willing to, you know, see what happens with the vote as far as who would be willing to support the substitute motion or not.
Thank you. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. As a board member...
As a board member, it's my responsibility to comment on this. And I know a lot of history, and I see significant amounts not covered in that that are pertinent to the United States and how we ended up how we are today, as what Mr. Panos had talked about, about the Red Scare and how happened things. Our secrets were sold to Russia, and how Europe became Eastern Europe and split, how it was the former Soviet Republic and what happened, how Cuba pointed missiles at the United States. I mean, this was all World War II, Korean conflict in Vietnam, and I do not see it specified in there. It's more slanted to one side, so I'm not in favor of this. Thank you.
Mr. King, and then Mr. Lockhart.
I'm just supporting Nathan's point that we should, you know, let the vote happen. And if it goes on, it goes on. I will just say it's really dangerous to have political legislators deciding education curriculum when we have a board of experts that have gone to school, that have credentials, that are well-recognized and renowned for this thing, and we're vetoing them off of our feelings or our particular political leanings. So I just think that's a really dangerous path to go down, but I agree with Mr. Wallaston. We all have our opinions, so we should vote on it.
Mr. Lockhart.
He was reading my mind.
Mr. King was reading my mind. I was gonna say the exact same thing.
Okay. Mr. Panos.
I'd like to point out that it is part of the duty of the Board of Education to approve the curriculum. And it is not true that all expertise lies in, you know, some professor. It's simply not true, especially in the subject of history. The question is, what is their perspective? They're notoriously one-sided in many times. And so, you know, if you, you know, even in science, if you noticed that something was incorrect, it would be up to you to make sure that it was corrected.
Just as a point of information. I'm sorry.
Point of order.
I just, as a point of information, I have a clarifying question.
Mr. King.
My understanding is that this curriculum is not under our purview. Like, this is UConn's curriculum, they decide it, and that's it. We just have to accept the class or not.
That is, no.
I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
Is that correct?
So just like AP US History, for example?
Yeah.
AP US History is an AP course. We have the curriculum, we teach it. We are not, it doesn't go through curriculum committee, it doesn't, you guys just vote to either offer the course or not offer the course.
Mr. Panos still has the floor.
Yes, thank you.
Chair has addressed.
All right.
No, wait, I'm sorry. She raised a point of order.
Because I thought you were speaking out of turn.
Oh, no, I was just getting, it was a point of information. I was just clarifying what our role is.
While Mr. Panos was speaking.
That takes priority.
Okay.
As a point of order.
Okay. I just want to clarify, that's true, but not in this particular case, because this particular case is a college course that's being offered.
Mr. Panos.
Okay. I find it strange that, you know, a course which had to be written cannot be influenced. I mean, this is not AP, and if an AP course came in and did the same thing, I would say, I would disapprove that it be offered. I mean, I think it's an incorrect point of view. And if I see something, it's my duty to point out what is wrong with it and to say that you should not approve this. This is not education, it's indoctrination, you know, if it is, as I understand. And so, you know, part of it is to actually have some sort of curriculum review of this in order to determine whether or not we would approve it. You know, that's all I'm saying.
And that's why I said we will gladly take your feedback. It's documented in the email, and we will have people who actually create the syllabus, and work with our UConn professor, to look at your feedback and take it into consideration. So we will definitely do that.
Well.
Because I don't think right now we can discuss if we can add your feedback into a curriculum or not. Like, that's what I'm trying to say. It is not the platform to, so I don't know, like, what are you expecting us to do right now in terms of the curriculum piece? Because that's not where we approve curriculum or even provide suggestions for curriculum.
Okay, so all we do is vote on whether to agree with this, what is shoved down our throat here, that's the idea.
No, it's just, you're agreeing to either offer the course or not at this point. I think that's the only thing we're asking for.
Mr. President, may I raise a point of information?
Mr. Lockhart.
It's my understanding, this is a course provided by UConn. They provide the curriculum. We do not have any type of oversight in creating this curriculum. We accept the curriculum as is, train teachers within Windsor Public Schools to present and teach the curriculum. And if there's anything that we don't like about the curriculum, then we can refer that to the curriculum committee or directly to Dr. Haiti's office for any type of follow-up or any type of, I don't wanna say follow-up, but any type of commentary to UConn at best. But as far as us changing the curriculum, modifying it, that's not within our realm. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
That is correct.
And hence why Dr. Haiti was willing to look at that, about whether or not potentially adding materials to it.
And so the reason why I raised that point of order, because I wanted to make sure that it would not, it would be out of order for us to even refer this to the curriculum committee. I just want to make sure that I understand what path to go down.
I believe that is correct.
Thank you.
Back to Mr. Panos.
Well, that is contrary to what Mr. Todd told me. You know, he's not here to answer it, but this is what he told me. He said that you may add to it as long as you teach the minimum that is on the ECE course, you can add to it.
So that's why I said we will take your feedback, and as...
No, you can add to it.
No, so we...
That's what he said. In other words, your information is incorrect, is my point.
So UConn approves our syllabus, right? So our teacher, who has been deemed as certified to teach that UConn class, creates a syllabus in collaboration with a UConn professor. So our teacher can provide feedback in terms of, we would like to add this. But if the professor they work with does not approve it, and UConn does not approve that syllabus, then we cannot teach it the way it is. So UConn has the final say in terms of if that syllabus is approved for us to teach it or not, the way we've created. So that's why I said we will take the feedback. We will definitely make sure it's shared, but we cannot guarantee if every piece of, every topic that you've included in your feedback will actually make it into our course or not.
Well, you know, the details of it, it's just like the theme of the Red Scare, all right? You have so much, you only do so much. I don't care what it is, but I want to make sure that our students are getting a proper both sides and understand what the evidence is for these two sides. Because as is described, it's a very contentious topic.
It's the assumption that they are not?
But you're ignoring my point, which is that I was told by Mr. Todd that you may add to it. He didn't say that it had to go back to, he just said you have to teach what is in it, but you may add to it. So that's the basis of what I'm saying. So I'm suggesting that we need to get together with them and find out whether this is true.
Dr. Hill.
Okay. So, Mr. Panos, like Haiti, you're not saying anything different from each other. So just try to clarify what she said. We, this board, you don't make the curriculum for the course. You have brought up points, Mr. Panos, that you would like to see in that course. Dr. Haiti has said a number of times, absolutely will take that. That is not part of this procedure. Right now, your feelings about the course, opinions about the course, whatever the case may be, made you bring up the substitute motion. That's the thing that you guys have to vote on. But taking your feedback, she will give it to the teachers of the course. They look at what they want to do and address, you will get to see it, they get to address what you're asking for in their syllabus, but it still has to go back to UConn for UConn to approve it. I understand clearly what you're saying, that Mr. Todd said the bare, you know, minimum in a syllabus. They're all the same. So no one's saying that potentially what you're asking for couldn't be in the syllabus. But right now, I'm just saying, we just keep kind of going back and forth on the same thing. That's not the thing that would actually happen tonight with you guys, that part. But it absolutely could have a bunch of different things, as you stated, added to the syllabus. Absolutely. But that wouldn't happen here.
Well, in what forum could we discuss this? Could the board review this? I'm suggesting...
Well, I don't think it's a discussion, it's whether or not the board, you guys need to vote on that, that's you guys, as to whether or not they even want to do that. You brought up what you would like, it was seconded, and so now you guys have to vote on your substitute, but that's for you guys.
Okay.
And then we follow what we're told to do.
All right, go ahead.
Ms. Taylor.
So the thing about it is this, it doesn't matter who told somebody that something could be added, or whatever the case may be, that person's not on the board, that person doesn't work for Windsor Public Schools, so it honestly doesn't matter who said that they could add something when and all those things, because that's actually not even protocol. My issue with all of this is that even what you're suggesting right now with Dr. Haiti is out of order. He can't tell you to add something without this, period. The email, it's null and void, because it has to go through here, even to even entertain, to add something or to entertain, to say something differently because it hurts somebody's sensibilities, or we're not saying the both sides, or whatever the situation is. It's still, I think that's the part that I think both of you aren't really touching on. Whatever he emailed you, you can't even technically go back and say, can you add this? I don't care if it's this year or next year, because it would have to come from us, and I don't agree with it. So I don't know where we go from there, or we just go back to the second or the amended motion or whatever. But even if all of the things being considered, it would still, from some other place, have to be tried to push through for even entertaining to add it to either this program of studies or 10 years down the road, it would have to come from this board to even entertain that. Am I wrong?
Correct.
Am I wrong?
I think you're wrong.
Mr. Wallaston.
I do agree with Ms. Taylor's sentiments. When she put it in that light, it would be, it would put us all in a bit of a wacky situation. Yeah, if each one of us decided to start acting as individual members and saying, you should be adding this to this course in separate emails, it would make it very hard for the staff to do their jobs, because there could very well be conflicting ideas on what should be added. Maybe they think X, Y, and Z should be added, and we think A, B, C should be added. So it could make it a bit harder of a process. But I think what was being relayed by Dr. Haiti is that, out of the kindness of her heart, if she did see it and thought it was something that was a decent idea, she wouldn't mind relaying it. But there's no, like, she's not chained to that, you know? She doesn't have to be forced. It's more of a kind gesture of sort that would be done for Mr. Panos if she felt like it was a good idea and decided, hey, maybe this is something we could possibly add because it's something that would be beneficial to the students. But as Ms. Taylor mentioned, I don't think there's serious hardcore obligation unless there is a five-four or kind of situation, and we all say, hey, we think this should be there, you know?
Mr. Madison.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. I mean, first of all, it's the prerogative of any member of the board to vote however they feel, regardless of any of anybody's opinion about why they're doing it, right? So I support Mr. Panos's right to vote against this if he doesn't like the curriculum, regardless of the situation. I do think this is about a high-level procedural question of, do you put this into the course of study? And it's different than the mechanics of the course itself. So I'm fine with the course of study going forward. I'm happy to support Mr. Panos on this amendment, because I agree with his concerns. It is interesting to ask what mechanisms you have to put in changes to the curriculum, if you're a board member. I agree with the concern that if everyone on the board did that with all their specific opinions, it'd be overwhelming. But I think at the high level that we're voting on tonight, this is just acceptance of the curriculum. That said, if somebody feels strongly about the curriculum not being accurate, I think that's a perfectly legitimate reason to vote against it, which would mean voting in support of this amendment to take it out of the main body. But I agree that this is a higher-level thing. But I also support anybody's right to vote against it because they don't like the more detailed components of it. I'm just not clear where the opportunity is to influence the detailed components, which leads me to the question of, is that even the role of the board members? Again, I support the right of any board member to vote against anything they want for whatever reasons, that's what you can do. But it's a question of, okay, you know, I would like to influence a lot of curriculum. I mean, I think this is a very squishy course. I'd like to see a lot more hard facts in there, but I'm not gonna make an issue out of it. But if I felt strongly enough, I'd certainly vote against it, which means in favor of pulling it out so we can talk about it as an independent notion. But I just think that it's, you know, it is the state of the art, for better or worse. You know, half of all college degrees are not even used for a job. And, you know, these kind of courses are the entry point, they're not necessarily your career direction. So there's value in it for the high school students to have some exposure to college credits. So I'm in favor of ECE strongly. And I'd like to see the hard facts in this course a little bit stronger. But that said, at the level that we're voting on here, you know, I think the actual course can go forward. But I do agree with the concerns that Mr. Panos has raised.
Mr. Lockhart.
Thank you. I received the spirit of what Mr. Madison is sharing with us. Yes, as a board, we do have a responsibility for reviewing and approving curriculum. We do have a curriculum committee. I think the distinction that I tried to make with my point of information is, this is a course that was created by UConn. Any course that's created by Windsor Public Schools, those have always gone through the curriculum committee, had two readings, and then brought forth to the board for consideration. So that right has never been taken away from the board. And I just want to make sure we all understand that this is a UConn course that we did not create, and that we were trained to teach and to deliver, and UConn had to certify us to understand that we knew how to deliver that curriculum with the same rigor so that the students can obtain those credits. So I think that's the distinction with this particular piece. If this was calculus one, we can have all the opinions we want in the curriculum committee and discuss that, and then bring it forth to the board for final deliberation. I think the sticking point is, this is not our curriculum. It's someone else's curriculum that we're accepting as a whole. And I think that's the mechanics that we're struggling with. And when I mean "we" as a board, I'm not talking about the one or two of us, just the collective process.
Mr. Wallaston.
And just to add on to all that Mr. Lockhart had said, and also echo Mr. Madison's sentiments, we are well within our rights to either support or not to support as a board member. So I think we have all pretty much, well, most of us have expressed our point of view, and I would be willing to see it voted on.
Mr. Panos.
Yeah, it is up to the board to do things without just blindly following. If you have knowledge, you know, history professors are not the only people who read history books, you know? You know, and so you have a right, you have an obligation to act according to what you actually know. And objectivity doesn't come from just having a group of people just take a vote, you know? That's frequently the complete opposite, you know? You'll have one person who is seeing the object thing, and the object truth, the objective truth, and eventually convinces, and this goes forward from there, you know? The history of science is full of examples of this, where a few just observe the objective evidence. But in this case, I mean, there's just a whole body of history on this topic. And I didn't see any serious evidence that it was. Now, if someone could explain this to me, I mean, I would change my mind, but, you know, I didn't see it. So what I can say is that, just based on what I'm seeing here now, this is not, or at least in part, this is doing the opposite of educating. It is just indoctrinating, and so...
So just, I'm gonna address one last point. This whole idea of we all read history. So I read a lot of medical advices on Google. Would you like me to be the one to write a medical course for medical students? So the fact that we all know history and read history, there are experts who are experts not in history, but also in what students need to learn and what kind of history that course is made of. Because keep in mind, this course provides kids with college credit. This is the whole idea, and that's why we don't approve that curriculum or AP, because that connection to college. So the fact that students are taking this course, passing it, and getting UConn credit means that UConn is now saying, we have our stamp of approval that kids have gotten whatever they needed to get in that course in order to get college credit. whatever they needed to get in that course in order to get college credit. So that's, that's just my final piece on that.
Ms. Taylor?
So again, when I asked, when I spoke the first time, I'm, I'm trying to figure out who took this course. It's a lot of assumptions. There's so many assumptions. If you didn't take the course, and all we got was a syllabus, I don't understand how we can assume that all these things are missing, and this is not being taught, or that's not being taught. Did anybody up here audit the course? Did somebody already take it? What am I missing? Because it just feels like, shouldn't someone, like, Ms. Feynman or someone share with us, like, it, are these like the accusations of indoctrination correct? Because it just seems like a really accusatory. And at that point, I'm going to need to call point of order, because it is really skimming on the line of like, we're, we're doing something wrong here, because somebody doesn't agree with something that they didn't even take. They didn't even take the course. So I'm just trying to figure out, why can't we go to the experts in the room to hear more about the course that everybody has so many opinions on and haven't yet taken a day in the course?
Ms. Feynman, would you?
Does Mr. Madison want to go first? Do you want me to go first? Whatever.
I have my hand up first. I call the question.
Okay. Well, it takes, takes.
What's parliament? Parliamentary.
Question takes two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds vote.
That's right. I called the question. Let's take a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
Excuse me. I just asked for Ms. Feynman to explain to us, to give more details. And I just don't understand how calling, I don't understand how calling.
Oh, that's fine. I thought you were done. I apologize.
I asked a question.
I can, I was in the classroom today. I don't know if that helps. I happened to be in the classroom today before I got the email, so it was just a coincidence. Just a couple of things. One thing that might help, if, if the board does decide that, like what Dr. Haiti said, that you'd like to look more deeply into what is being taught in the course through the curriculum committee, or whatever mechanism would be appropriate. What might be helpful is we add in what the primary sources are that are used for this course, and not just the literary sources. Because as you look through the syllabus, when you're looking at the, where it says readings, or the reading of, it's showing what is being read on the literary side. It's a class that counts as an English class and a history class. What's not in the syllabus are all of the different primary sources that they are reading. I just think the board might find that helpful, like all board members, if we do end up taking a closer look at the course. Because what you're seeing here are the novels that go along with the course, and not the primary sources. You know, I'm not in the class every single day. Between buildings, and, and I'm not there every day. Today I was there. The topic today was actually the Rosenbergs. That was exactly what they were studying today, using primary sources. I thought it was interesting, considering the topic that came up in the, in the email. It's not, I, I've been in there on days where they're deeply discussing the Civil War. That's been the topic for the first couple of months of school. I, I, so that's what they were doing, happened to be doing today. And for, I asked the teachers, like, for how long will you be studying this? Of course, the next couple of weeks. As you can see from the syllabus, the unit on the Red Scare ends this month. So it's not going to go past the next couple of weeks. The other thing, just for the public and for the board, I'm looking at the syllabus right now. I just would want to point out that in the description of the unit, it doesn't, it's my opinion, doesn't seem to be politically slanted. It, it just says, description. "As the US emerges from World War II, the Red Scare or fear of communism spreads across America." It goes on to say that the House Un-American Activities Committee was leading the charge in the government against suspected communists, et cetera. And then it said, "This turbulent period would pit neighbors against each other in one of America's most politically charged eras." I don't know if I'm missing a slant to that. Maybe I am. But that's the description of the unit. And again, like I said before, can explain what happened in class today, which is the study of the Rosenbergs, using primary sources. They weren't reading the crucible today. And I'd be happy to share, in any further investigation of the course, what the primary source documents are that are being used, along with the literary sources.
Mr. Madison?
Call the question.
Any objection to calling the question?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to ask if, if you could make all of this.
Mr. Wallaston?
We have to vote. If it's not two-thirds, we can go. I have several more opinions. I'm, I would love to go to 11 o'clock, guys.
Okay.
I have a lot of opinions on this. It's not going to change the vote. I agree with Mr. Panos. Let's call the vote and be done with it.
This is a vote, then, on the substitute motion?
It's a vote to call the question.
You got it. If, if there's unanimous, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Two-thirds.
Yeah, unless there's unanimous consent.
Unless there's unanimous consent.
To calling the question. Then we don't have to vote on that.
Right, right.
Is there any objection to calling the question?
Well, I was, yeah, I'd object.
Now, we need a two-thirds.
Go to a vote, two-thirds vote.
Okay. So the motion, so what's on the floor here is to call the question. Is to call the question. And it takes two-thirds yes vote for us to call the question, which then gets us to the underlying vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Looks like motion carries six-three. Now we have the main motion, the substitute motion, made by Mr. Panos, seconded by Mr. Halleck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your aye.
For the substitute.
For the substitute, your motion.
Your substitute motion.
So Mr. President, before, if, if point of order, if I may, could we just please restate the motion that we're voting on, so that the board members know what they're voting on, please?
You have it.
Okay. Now move to make a substitute motion that the board consider all but the American Studies course for approval of the program of studies. With the American Studies course being considered for approval at a future meeting after a review by the board.
The motion was made by Mr. Panos, seconded by Mr. Halleck. All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion is defeated four-five. Next item on the agenda is
point of order, now we go, now we go back to the main motion.
We're going to the program of studies.
Yes.
Which we haven't discussed yet. Okay.
Okay.
You had made that motion, and it was seconded. We now have a discussion on the program of studies. Second reading. Comments, questions on the program of studies?
Could we just, apropos of the same course in here, could we have, would you, would you send us the history of syllabus?
The primary sources.
I can send you a list of the primary sources, if that's what the board is requesting. That would probably go through Dr. Haiti.
Any objection to that? Then that would be great, if you could.
No problem.
Any other discussion on the second reading that we're having? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Mr. Madison, I don't know how you voted.
Aye.
Motion carries six-three. Next item on the agenda is the accountability report. Dr. Haiti, if you feel comfortable to.
I'm just waiting for her to pull it up.
Okay.
All right. So let's switch gears to some happy news and some exciting celebrations. And I just, when Dr., when Mr. Lockhart presented this little thing at the beginning, one of the things that he said was, this is, part of this meeting is to celebrate achievement. And my hope today is by sharing some of our data here, is to really celebrate achievement, because a lot of, a lot of hard work has gone into what I'm about to present in terms of moving Windsor to new heights. And I am very excited to, to present this today. So just a really quick overview of, you know, where we are currently, what our priorities are, and what we're working on. So when Dr. Hill took over five years ago, he said that his two main areas of focus are culture and academics. So we all understand that culture is the root of everything. So without a proper culture, a positive culture in place, we cannot look at academics and expect academics to move anywhere. So these are two buckets that, everything that we do here in Windsor is aligned to one of these two buckets. When we talk about culture in Windsor, we talk about four Cs. We want our staff and our students and everybody who is part of Windsor, which we hope our board will, you know, join forces with us, to be courageous, to be committed, to be caring and creative. And these are really four things that capture everything that we expect our students and our adults to embody as they go through, whether they're students or they are coming here every day for work. We ask them to really, you know, have these attributes on a daily basis. One of the biggest things we talk about, and we've been talking about since last year, is this whole idea of energy vampires. And every single Windsor Nation, some of you have attended one of our, beginning of the year, Windsor Nation. I talk to teachers about this idea of energy vampires, and our responsibility as adults working in Windsor is to make sure that we don't allow those energy vampires, those people around us that suck the energy out of us. There is a lot of great things that are happening in Windsor. But, you know, we do find people, and we come across people that just tend to only seize the negative and everything. And so we, you know, with grace and love and everything else, we talk about we're checking energy vampires. We are not allowing energy vampires to suck the energy out of us. And we're really trying to isolate the energy vampires, so that they don't feel like this is a place for them here in Windsor. So again, I wanted to share this with our board, because my hope is that, and we've actually seen such a great culture shift. We've seen, we've talked to teachers. Teachers have told us, we have been checking energy vampires as we go, and we're not allowing anyone to suck that positive energy out of us. This is our instructional core wheel, or our North Star, and you probably have seen it everywhere by now. I realize that I have never really formally talked about it at one of our board meetings. So I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to talk about this whole idea of our North Star. So this was created as an effort to make sure that we are really focused in Windsor in what we want to do, what we want to become known for. And this is really my idea of how we're going to take Windsor to new heights. This whole idea of, so our outer circle, we all know that's our mission, developing the genius in every child. But just talking to different people, defining genius could mean something different. I could define genius differently from one of you. So we wanted to make sure that as a district, we have a common understanding of what is that mission, what does developing that genius looks like. So we came up with five attributes. And some of you all remember, before COVID, before COVID hit, we had begun to work on our portrait of a graduate, and then it kind of got paused. And we visited again last year, and then we got our five attributes approved by the board. So these five attributes, self-aware, critical thinker, problem solver, effective communicator, and socially responsible. These are the five attributes that we said, as a, as Windsor, if our students are able from K to 12 to develop these five attributes, then we would consider ourself have succeeded in developing that genius in every child. So now, how are we going to make sure that we're developing these attributes just like anything else? If we expect kids to learn it, we expect teachers to teach it. So those five attributes are embedded in what we define as high-quality instruction. So we looked at the attributes and realized that critical thinking is that one critical and main attribute that if we are able to develop in our kids, then our kids will be life learners and future-ready. So we kind of elevated this idea of critical thinking, and we use the four other attributes to serve that attribute. So we defined high-quality instruction as instruction that results in students thinking critically. And how are we going to know that they are thinking critically? We're going to see them problem-solving. We're going to see them being effective communicators. We're going to see them being socially responsible and self-aware. So this is how the three outer circle work. Now, in order to make sure that we're aligned, and everything that we aspire to become has a direct through line into the classroom, we came up with daily practices that we expect our teachers to use in a classroom, regardless of what they teach. So everything in the inner circles are daily practices that you would expect to see in a classroom. With our core being instructional, our tier-one instruction, which is, and I will talk about it a little later in terms of explicit teaching and what we teach our students. The circle closer to the inner core, these are the three attributes that we call phase-one attributes. This is what we've been focused on this year, and we will continue to focus on until the rest of the year. And we're not going to move into the next circle, which is phase-two practices, until we make sure that every teacher in Windsor is well-equipped and have mastered these three attributes. And those are, that our educators are asking students to explain their thinking, and that educators are providing actionable feedback, and that educators are planning for thinking questions. So these are the main three attributes that we're focusing on this year. So this encompasses our North Star. This is how we are going to take Windsor to the next level. All right, so now let's go on to our next-generation accountability report. And I do want to share, because I did receive some questions and feedback from Ms. Cantor in regards of the accountability report and the data. I want us to make sure that we understand the purpose of the accountability report is really to, and that is directly from the state, it is to provide a complete picture of a school or a district. The accountability report is not meant to be an indicator of how each grade level is doing. It is not meant to be an indicator or a data tool to be used to assess how our curriculum is, or anything like that. This is really providing us with a big picture of how, as a whole district, we are doing. It also allows us to really stay away from just tested areas, so that our curriculum does not become, we're just teaching for a test, so that we can increase a single number. And it also expands the ownership to more staff. So we're looking at indicators that have to do with all our staff, like our chronic absenteeism. Every single person that works in Windsor, in a way or another, has an influence on kids coming to school. So that is an indicator that everybody can own, and everybody can work towards. Just a little background about the state indicators. So every school gets a report card, and the district as a whole gets an accountability report. Our elementary schools, the percentage of the weight for each category is different, obviously, from middle and high. And as you can see, one of the main thing I want to highlight here is that red. So that red band, which is 42% at elementary and 40% in middle school, is about academic growth. So yes, we talk about achievement, which achievement is students being at grade level and achieving mastery at their grade level. But growth has a higher weight, and that is how much our students have met their target growth. So even if, for example, I am a sixth grader who comes to sixth grade at a second grade level, and I grow two or three years, even though I have not met my grade level expectations, level and I grow two or three years, even though I have not met my grade level expectations, so I'm still not at sixth grade level, I will get way more points than somebody who started at sixth grade and is at sixth grade. So growth is higher weighted highly or heavily than our academic achievement. So other indicators that play a huge role, that yellow indicator is part of every single three, 12, so our intermediate, middle and high school. And that's our physical fitness assessment that plays a role as well. Chronic absenteeism is at all levels, so our K-2 schools, the only two indicators that they support us in is our chronic absenteeism indicator for all students and as well as our high-needs students. All right, so last year, 2324, our index was 69.7, which is a 2.2 point increase from the prior year. We are a point three away, zero point three points away from becoming a category-two district. So our hope and our goal is that next year we would be classified as a category-two district. As a state, the state has increased from the previous year 1.1 points. So technically, we have doubled the state increase. And one of the questions that I got from Ms. Cantor is the comparison to the state. So everybody compares to the state and that's why the state provides a state accountability report, because that's the average. That's kind of where you want to at least, at least be above the state average and then go from there. So why am I using the state average as a point of reference? And we all have our own opinion of where the state is. We might think that the state sucks as a whole, that, that could be your opinion, but we, when we do data, we have to have a point of reference to try to target. And that's the point of reference that I've chosen to, to present here today. This is a district versus a state and a couple of things I want to highlight. I want to highlight that out of 22 indicators, we have outperformed the state average in 11 of them. And I, and that is, that is a celebration. And again, I will say again, we're going to celebrate every single small win because that is what gives us, gives our teachers that push and that momentum to keep going because this is really, really hard work. If you wake up every day and you come here to work with our kids all day to try to push our kids, it is hard work. So we are going to celebrate a point four, a point five or a point three. And that was one of the question, you know, why is this a celebration? It is a celebration because we outperformed the state. So on average, we're doing better than most of the average district in Connecticut. Closing the achievement gap, so in 1718, and I went back prior to COVID, so we can just get a good picture of prior to COVID years, COVID years, and then now, the gap between us and the state was 4.8 points. Last year, the gap has gone down to 1.1 point. So we have a point, 1.1 index point in order for us to outperform the state average. This is comparing ourselves to ourselves, so from 2324 to 2223. So one thing that I always make sure that we highlight, that we want to at least do better than what we did the year before, with understanding that we've got different groups of kids and all of that. However, the indicators, our goal is also always to just do better than the previous year, was an ultimate goal to outperform the state and reach our target goal in each category. Some of the things I want to highlight here is that chronic absenteeism for all students and high-needs students is over 10 points increase, so 12.5 and 13.1. If you look at a lot of other districts, so you pull all the high-performing districts, these numbers are not, you cannot, you're not going to see these numbers anywhere. Our growth in chronic absenteeism is remarkable and it is really definitely worth the celebration. Also, our growth in physical fitness is remarkable, 17.2 points from the previous year. Yes, we have not hit our target yet and we, we have more work to do, but the idea that we were able in one year to move our index point in physical fitness, 17.2 points, that's remarkable and speaks a lot to our PE teachers and all the work they do. Ranking ourselves within Alliance District, so we all know Alliance, our 36th district that the state have grouped together and our goal is to be one of the highest-performing Alliance District. And Ms. Cantor, I'm going to answer your question right now. You know, yes, we do want to be out of Alliance. We don't want to be labeled as an Alliance District. However, there is significant funds that comes with being an Alliance District. So why did I say I want to be the highest-performing Alliance District? Because I do want to keep the funds, but I do want to be number one at least in that group. So we went down from being number nine, 2223, now we're number six. Two years before that, we were number 15. So we can see that we're growing, we're moving Windsor, and my expectation is that hopefully in two years, we're going to be number one. Currently, it's Vernon, so he, I am trying to beat Vernon, so we will, we'll get there.
And I will say, as I've said many times before over these years, Dr. Haiti put it so nicely, like once I realized you lose over half a million dollars, I stopped screaming, we're getting out of Alliance, we're going to have Alliance. But I've also said, there's actually no exit strategy to leave Alliance. So I know it gets thrown around as a hammer, you know, in different places, like, but we're this, we're that. You know, again, I don't, I don't know when the state decided to come up with their little designation, but that's a thing that happens in education. People come with designations. It's typically around when they get some kind of funding at some point. And I've been public with the state, I'm an unknown entity with the state. You didn't think this through, you never came up with an exit plan. So there is no real metric, and they were never really honest about the metrics to get in. They shared some stuff with districts, so people have bought it. Part and parcel, I know people in town that disagree with me, but I, I will say I'm actually the expert in the room on this. So we don't know how to get out. There is no way to get out. But we're going to be the best wherever we are. And being an Alliance District has not stopped any of our children from going off to college, all colleges, all tiers in the nation, doing amazing things. So whoever and whenever people want to hold on to that, I've told people around town, eating out in town, like you hold on to that. It makes you feel good, like, yeah, but, that's fine. But our kids, there is nothing that has stopped them. So this is just a designation that's there, and I know this board does not want to try to find a half a million dollars. So leave it alone. Okay?
This is our accountability index per school. So in comparing from 2223 to 2324, I do want to just highlight a couple of things. The two middle schools, that's OE and the chronic, these are K-2 schools. They only have two indicators out of the 22, which is chronic absenteeism. So that's why the increase is, you know, tremendous because it's only counting the two indicators. But really, when you look at the other four schools, I do want to publicly acknowledge and highlight our Sage Park Middle School Principal Jorgensen for the amazing job. And actually, this number does not even do justice because when you really take the whole accountability report and look at indicator by indicator, look at the amount of growth that students have made at Sage Park is incredible. We pulled some of our high-performing districts around us, I'm not going to name them. We pulled their middle school and we are actually better, we're outperforming their middle school students. So kudos to middle school. Back to Ms. Cantor, yes, we have a lot of work to do and we're, we're loving it, we're going to do it. And I have no doubt in my heart and anywhere that we will get to where we want to be. But again, today is a time for us to celebrate achievement and to, you know, show everybody that the hard work that we're doing every day, it is paying off and it will pay off on the long run. None. All right, so what are we focusing on? So there are four indicators that this year we're going to focus on. Our high-needs students, their performance and their growth. So high-needs include our students with disabilities, includes our MLL students, our multi-language learners, and it also includes our students who are free and reduced lunch. So when we looked at our data, indicator by indicator, we realized that we have some work to do when it comes to our, these groups of students. We will continue to work on the fitness assessment. Ms. Cantor, I'm going to answer your question here. So we have done, we have done different things last year, especially with the middle school, so I'm just going to give an example. March to Madness, for example, that was one of the activities that the middle school PE teachers came up with. And it included this idea of everybody in the building, including adults, are participating against students to do the fitness assessment. So the fitness assessment has four components and sometimes kids, we know they can do it, it's just they don't want to do it. They don't want to run, they don't want to do the push-ups. So Principal Jorgensen and her team came up with this great idea. It was kind of like a competition between adults and kids. Everybody around the building was running, kids took it, it was fun, they did it. And we've seen an incredible growth. So we are hoping, we're actually not hoping, we will be implementing that same idea over at the high school, you know, to, to hopefully see these results at the high school as well. So we're going to continue our work on fitness assessment. Also, one of our focus this year at the high school is going to be our high school on-track for graduation. So that is our ninth graders who have earned six credits by the end of the ninth grade year. And that's how they rate our track for graduation or not. So we are putting a lot of systems in place to catch students during the school year before they actually get to the end of the school year and they have failed a course or two and have not gotten their six credits. And we will continue working on chronic absenteeism. We have put systems in place that are obviously working, like our data tracker, our attendance tracker. And that is a district-wide system that is grown in district. We've created that system and our attendance clerk are responsible for updating it on a daily basis. We have attendance teams in every building that include nurses, social work, a lot of different support. And at any point in time, we can pull up our attendance tracker and tell you who's absent, how many days, why is there absent, and what strategies we've implemented for all those students to make sure they come back to school. Our next steps, and Ms. Bachelder kind of hinted to that, we're not doing anything new. We are keeping that same focus on going back to the basics. We realize that good old-school paper pencil works, actually doing writing, doing math problems, not, you know, not busy work actually works. So we're going to keep doing that. Explicit teaching is explicitly teaching a content, using the strategies and the practices that we have in our instructional core to develop our student critical thinking characteristics. And also, we are limiting the use of technology. We're not taking technology completely away, but we're really limiting, it is not being used as a babysitter, it's not being used as, let's, you know, put kids on programs. We're really using technology in a very strategic way to support instruction and to support that going back to the basics campaign. We are continuing our work with data. We're looking closely at data, so we started our data talks initiative a few years ago. This year, we are including a new group of educators that we have not been doing data talks with. And those educators are special ed teachers and our MLL teachers. So a couple of slides ago, I said that we have some work to do with our high-needs students. Having data talks with our special ed teachers and our MLL teachers will provide us to, will allow us to really keep a close eye on the performance of those high-needs students to make sure that we're providing the supports they need as we go throughout the year. We are doing some work in terms of auditing our math and ELA curriculum and that comes with our K-3 program that we're currently piloting per state mandate. We're going to have to adopt the program next year. So we are in the process of piloting a curriculum for K-3. We're really super focused on our North Star. That is the center of every conversation, every PD, whether it's for teachers or leaders. We really feel like if we keep a laser-like focus on very specific skills, we will get to where we want to be. In terms of our special education population, we are transitioning into standard-based goals and objectives. So moving forward, and I, all our special ed teachers will be trained on that. And moving forward, when we write goals and objectives as part of an IEP, it will be standard-based. So we can no longer just say, because you have an IEP, you're in sixth grade, we're going to, you know, have you work on goals and objectives that are for kindergarten. It will have to be linked to a grade-level goals and objective with the understanding that it might have to be a progression in order to get to that grade-level standard. And again, I talked about having systems in place at Windsor High School to ensure that students who are at risk of failing are caught early and we have proper interventions in place and we're not waiting until May or June to find out that we've got 50 of our ninth graders who will not have six credits by the end of the year. So we have systems in place to make sure we catch them early on. And I'm going to end with this slide. This is one of the slides I use at every single Windsor Nation. And this is the whole idea of shifting our focus from the input that we have as educators to the impact on students. So now when we as leaders go in classrooms, when we have conversation with teachers, we really talk about the impact of what we do every day on the students. And if we're not able to see a direct impact on the students, that something that we're doing, some of our input is not working, then we need to change it. So we're trying to change our shift from a checklist, I did this, I did this, I taught this, to what I did as a result of what I did as an adult, what impact do we see on students and is the impact aligned to our North Star or not? And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much. And I'm looking for questions, Mr. Madison, then Mr. King.
I have like five or six, so I'll just go one at a time. On the slide, can we bring the slides up just so everyone knows I'm going? I don't have the numbers on here. It's the second slide, I think, in the deck. The slide that has the title State Accountability Percentages? Yeah, if you could share the deck, I'm going to be referencing a lot. On the screen? There you go. Yeah, slide two? The one with all the bar charts? Yeah, question, how do you, what are those tied to mechanically under the covers? Like, how do you measure those?
Which one?
The various bars. I know there's like eight of them, so not to try to drain them. But like, how, like academic performance, like does that go to some of the testing?
Yes, so academic performance is ELA, math and science in tested areas, so third through eighth grade and science in 11th grade.
Okay. And then the red bars are just the scores changed across the years, right? It's just a delta on the scores?
The red bar is the percentage of the weight. So 42% of the final accountability number for that elementary school sits on student growth. And the way they calculate student, and I have all the data and algorithm if you're interested.
Just at a high level, yeah.
Yeah, I can share it with you. So they have a formula where they look at every kid based on what their score was the previous year to this year. They have a target growth for every single student. And depending on the number of students that have hit their target, that's how they get that 42% of your final index.
Gotcha. That makes sense. How about some of the ones that are not like fully academically quantitative?
Like which ones? So they, they have a formula and an algorithm for each indicator. I will gladly share that.
Yeah, how much of those are based on like human judgment versus objective tests?
So everything is, so we can go down the list. Academic achievement is test, academic growth is based on test. MLL, which is progress toward English proficiency, it's based on loss link, which is a test. Chronic absenteeism, it's a percent of our students. Post-secondary readiness, that is based on the number of students that we get from the clearinghouse that have actually applied and started college. Graduation on track is number of kids who have six credits by the end of ninth grade. Graduation six-year, same thing, our special ed students that graduate in six years. Post-secondary entrance, actually, my bad, sorry. Post-secondary entrance is the number of students getting into college. The readiness indicator, which is five and six, is connected to our number of students who are taking AP, ECE or two CTE classes in a sequence. Indicator 11 is based on fitness assessment, which is a test, and we do have cut scores for that test. Art access is the number of students in ninth through 12 who have enrolled in one of the classes that fall under art access.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. King?
I just, I just had two questions, but, but before I, before I go any-
You know, you have to have at least five questions.
I know, I'm sorry, I don't have five. I did, I did want to say thank you for sharing and it's awesome that everything looks like it's going really well and that we're making progress and I think it's really exciting. I think, like what Dr. Hill was saying, oftentimes people just dwell in the negative, being an Alliance District, et cetera. So it's really great to see that we have real meaningful progress. Just as a question, because I just don't, I don't know. When you said we're point three points away from moving up to a category-two district, what does that mean?
So there are three categories that the state assigned to schools, so category one, two or three, and it is based- two, or three, and it is based on your index score. So district that have an index score less than seventy are a category three district, which is the lowest category you could be in. From seventy to eighty are a category two, anything above eighty are a category one.
Cool. And then you mentioned that you had pulled some of the index performance for other middle schools, high-performing middle schools, but you didn't want to name and shame them. Would you share that with me privately? Because I have, I have some bones to pick with some friends.
We actually have a presentation about this.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Pianos?
So, going back to this, that one right there. So, if I understand, the elementary, thirty-two percent are the, are what you call academic achievement. Now, thirty-two percent, this is the, the percent out of the total. This is not the percent who are at grade level, right?
No, it's the weight.
The weighting.
The weight, it's just the weight, it's only thirty-two. So like you said earlier, the forty-two percent for the growth indicates that the growth is counted more.
Yes.
In all these things. Okay, there's, now, with regard to, to the category two, this, this one here, the district that, we're only two point two points away, right?
Point three.
Point three.
See? And, so, again, this may explain why it is, as you say, that, that we, we are an alliance district, and yet, we're about to go into category two. Is that, is that right? If one would say that it's, it's not, you know, referring to what Dr. Hill was saying, you know, we, we seem to be in a, in a place we can't get out. The question is, where are, does this give us any indication of where we are compared to it, you know, to-
Everybody.
Every, everything. That, that's what this is. So, by the way, when I looked it up, there were five categories to this. So I don't mean to, but seems to me, and, and I don't know.
That's, we, we get a spreadsheet from the state that has the, um, our-
Oh, the spreadsheet indicate, yeah, you're right. The spreadsheet only indicated three, two, and one.
Yes.
You're right.
So that's where the-
But, but they didn't have all of them. I don't know. It's, it, it, anyway, when I looked up, you know, the categories, they said, they explained that there's five, so it is a bit confusing. I, I point out that-
I wonder if the other categories are, like, the, the turnaround schools, because they are in a category by themselves. So maybe there are the different categories, but as far as, like, the state ranking?
Yeah, it was the state readiness, this, this evaluation. Anyway, I don't, I note here that, that we were in category two in twenty eighteen and nineteen, right?
Yes.
So, and we slipped, is that the idea? So this is, sorry, you're saying?
Yep, so that's the COVID, so eighteen, nineteen was that last year before COVID, and then we went down.
Okay, so-
But we were going in the right direction prior to COVID. So we're going to gain back that momentum, and we're starting to see that.
Mm-hmm, okay. The, this, uh, who am I? The, so the index rate, I'd say, in district versus state, oh, wait, could you, again, I'm, I'm a little, you know, they, they use terms like index rate, okay, this is percentages, is, what is in this one? District versus state, okay?
So you're looking at the percent of points that we've earned in every indicator based on the total allocation. So every indicator has a different weight. So some indicators, you can get fifty points, some you can get a hundred points. So we're looking at the percent of points that we were able to get for each indicator. So let's look at the first one, the mass high need. So we got sixty-six point six percent of our points that we can possibly get, which is fifty points, while the state as an average only got sixty-six point one. So we've outperformed the state by point five of a point.
Fifty-six, um, where, where in the, one, two, three, four, five? Where are you looking, looking in the fifth?
I'm looking at number four, the very first highlighted, one D.
One D math performance.
One D path, sixty-six point six, okay, I see, so we, we beat, we out, oh, yes, I see. But the, but the index rate back there at forty-nine point nine, what does that mean? And first column on the same thing. Forty-nine point nine under math performance index, high need students, okay? What does that mean?
That's, that's our actual number, so that's our actual rate. So the percentage-
Actual rate of what?
The percent that we've, so the math performance, so we were, our numbers, our students, all our high need students in grades three through eight, as well as our S A T math at the high school, the percent of students that have met that index. So there is a cut, like a standard. So we had forty-nine point nine percent meet-
Have met the target, seventy-five, or what?
Nope, they have met the index. So the index is, the, the rate is like the standard. So for example, S A T at the high school is like five forty, right? So that's like saying forty-nine point nine percent of the whole student population that's counted under this indicator met that standard. However, the target is seventy-five. So we needed seventy-five percent of the students to meet the standard, but we only had forty-nine point nine meet the, meet the standard. So as a result, we only got thirty-three points out of the fifty points that we could have gotten.
Okay, okay.
How'd you get thirty-three out of fifty?
So what do you mean, how to, how do you?
So given, given forty-nine point nine and seventy-five, how do you get to thirty-three?
So, and that's what I'm telling you, there is an algorithm. It is not a direct, it's not-
Yeah, okay, it's nonlinear.
Yes, no, it's not.
All right, that's fair, that's fair.
No, it's not.
All right, that's cool.
Because the weight is different depending on the student population, your, your group number, the amount of kids, your N in your data.
Yep.
It is different.
That makes sense.
I'm going to bring my stat back.
I know.
You had a great job.
Thank you.
I know, right? Hey, water.
So-
He has a question.
Um, we also had this one here, right?
Closing the gap.
They're closing the gap with the state average, but I noticed, you know, we closed the gap, but we closed the gap by the rest of the state doing worse than us, is that the?
Well, so that's what I said, so regardless of what we think the state is, right? So you have to have a reference point. So yes, the state might have done worse in different years, and we have done better, but on average, when we compare ourselves five, six years ago of how we were doing versus the state, we've, we've done better. There are some years that we've outperformed the state, but I'm talking about on average over a period of time, because I wanted to get before COVID and after COVID, because I don't think it's a fair assessment to just look at the past few years.
So everybody's trying to beat the state average?
Well, that's, well, that's your first target, is beat the state and then beat everybody else.
Okay, could, is it possible for everybody to mi, to beat the average of the state?
Well, then the average is going to go up.
Everybody's above average?
Great inflation, it's impossible.
Okay, do the math. I won't explain it. Um, oh, we have a physical fitness rate here, what is this? What is, we have a forty-three percent, I'd say, looking at-
District-wide.
Yes.
District-wide index, okay? We have forty-three, it says forty-three percent, right? That first column under there. Now that means that forty-three percent, and we want it to be seventy-five percent.
So forty-three percent of all students that took the fitness assessment in all grades across the district have passed the four components of the fitness assessment. So we only get credit for kids that pass all four.
Okay.
So our target is to get seventy-five percent of our kids that take that assessment to pass all four.
Okay. But this is a, a required assessment, right? This is not something you can just say, blow it off or something like this.
Nope, it's, it's just like ASBAC.
Right.
But it's not given in every grade level, it's only specific grade levels.
Okay. The, um, so, it, you know, here, here's a question of Dr. Hill here, is, we are the alliance district that we talk about here, now, would, and, and, and perhaps, you know, something for the, the board when it gets together for the legislative company. If you get money for doing poorly, isn't that an incentive to do poorly? And then you're stuck with that rest of your life?
That's why you want to be number one.
You want to-
I was told, Mr. Pedos, we couldn't agree more. I was told my first year, when I said, I want to get off this alliance in twenty twenty, and all my other superintendent friends jumped all over me on that Zoom. No, you don't, blah, 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 blah. And then I went back to Ms. Batchelder, and she explained the money situation, and I said, okay, I don't want to get off alliance, because there, there is no incentive, quite honestly, to do better. Like, there really isn't.
There's no financial, there's no financial incentive to-
Well, no financial incentive, but-
By the state.
I'll just say, some people just don't care. But we care, and we want to beat my colleague in Vernon. He know, he knows we want to take that crown. He, he knows that, and we're coming for it. But, um, we're not, we don't want to get out of alliance unless we can find that money somewhere else. And it's not just the half of the knowledge.
I'm going to tell Joe.
But we have a, you know, the guaranteed money that comes from the state, right? We get a nice fixed amount, the, the other districts that are going to lose money progressively over, what is it, till twenty thirty-two or twenty twenty-eight, we're not going to lose money. There's a lot of incentives to be, to stay in an alliance district.
I want to be on the alliance. Has everyone, anyone ever gotten off?
No.
They've added six.
They added.
They added six?
They added six districts.
So-
They've added six districts, Mr. President.
That's what, thirty-six now, right? Thirty-six districts.
Well, this sounds like a, a job for legislation to, to correct, uh, same stuff. But anyway, it's not our business, I think.
Oh, it's our business, I, I got a solution to that.
You know anybody that came?
I do.
All right, it's a, you know, it seems like rather perverse in incentives here for, you know, you could, you could end up being, let's say, the top, one of the top in the, you know, in, in the state, and you'll be in, you'll be in an alliance district.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I guess this, I guess the legislation doesn't have all that much sense, I don't think. Um, not to belabor, let's see, I guess, here, um, don't have to pick on anybody, but on the accountability index here, oh, what would explain the, okay, we had good growth in all of our elsewhere, right? But it, it started out low. Is there a particular reason why, I must not have enough data here?
So keep in mind, yes, and, and this is very misleading, that's why I started with that. So this is only the chronic absenteeism, right? So twenty-two, twenty-three, attendance was not so good, right? And then they just, they did a lot of great work, they got kids in school, so it jumped thirty-one point five points, because you're only looking at two indicators that has a hundred percent weight on the index. You see what I mean? Because they have-
Go again, number six.
So K two, our K two schools, don't have anything out of the twenty-two indicators, except the two chronic absenteeism. So the weight of two indicators is carrying the whole hundred percent. So that's why their index, so a little improvement in attendance has carried them a long way. It is not equally the carry that you would get in middle school, because middle school, you improve attendance, even if you did better than K two. Attendance is only like five percent or less in middle school, I mean.
Weight?
You see what I mean? So the weight is different.
Oh, where's the weight, where's, where's that indicated, the weight?
Actually, in fact, it's, it's not even, so for middle school, chronic absenteeism is not one of the indicators that is calculated, not at the end of the score, hold on, it's-
So there are different standards?
Ten percent. So in middle school, for example, attendance is ten percent of the weight. In K two, it's hundred percent of the weight. So a little improvement in K two is going to go a long way in a, versus an improvement in middle school, because it's only ten percent. So even if they have a hundred percent attendance rate in middle school, it's only ten percent of their final weight.
They give it, I suppose they have an explanation for this? The state? Why they do it?
Because K two doesn't have any other tested grades. We don't test kids in K two in anything else. They don't do physical fitness, they don't do ASBAC, they don't do anything else.
Okay, okay. Can, um, focus indicators, um, continue our work on fitness assessment, um, what do we do there? What do we do in fitness assessment? What, what work doing focus indicators? Do you just make them do more push-ups or something like?
Nope, so we make sure that, so there are a lot of different programming things that we can do, so in terms of our curriculum, for example. If we know it is a tested grade, so they take the fitness assessment in sixth grade and eighth grade. So knowing that, our curriculum could be focused towards getting kids ready. So just like anything else, if we expect kids to learn a skill, we teach them the skill. So we have a focus on teaching kids and practicing push-ups, for example. And we do progress monitoring. So today, you do five push-ups, you keep working on your core strengths, tomorrow, you're going to be able to do seven push-ups. And then we keep building up, and then by the end of the year, we decide when to give the fitness assessment, it's an open window. When a teacher feels like the class is ready to take that part of the test, then they take the test. So there are program, program changes that we can make to make sure that we're getting kids ready for the fitness assessment. Also, at the high school, for example, we talked about our student athlete. So we talked about, we have a lot of student athletes, and I think we would do better if we had them test during their season.
Oh, yeah.
There's nothing in the manual that says that we cannot do that. We choose our own testing date. So there are some tricks that we can do to help with that.
Okay. Um, the, so, on the next steps, part of the next steps, let's say, after this, this one regarding tier one, you know, data, okay? Would you, would you be a little bit more explicit about explicit teaching?
Great. So explicit teaching is this whole idea that we expect teachers to spend ten to fifteen minutes. Yep.
Is there such a thing as implicit teaching?
Yes, yeah. So there are a lot of different teaching models, so you have like the flipped classroom, for example, where you can assign kids a video to watch, a lesson to read at home, and then they come to school and you discuss, and you discuss the lesson, right? You have, you as a teacher have not done any kind of explicit teaching in the classroom. So there are different teaching models, and they might be working. We found that for our kids, having at least the expectation of ten to fifteen minutes of what we call a mini lesson, where teachers are explicitly teaching a skill and then practicing the skill, works for us. So that is the expectation for all teachers.
Um, the, on the same page, the bottom, data, could you clarify what small groups informed by data means? Is the, how are the groups selected?
Yep, so in a classroom, part of your tier one instruction, after you teach your mini lesson, we expect teachers to then look at the students, right? You've got twenty kids in a class, ten of them are ready to go on, on their own and solve problems on their own. And then you've got five kids who are completely lost, they have no idea what you just did, and five kids who just need a little help. So we are expecting teachers to look at the data, and that could be informal data, anecdotal data, assessment data, whatever, and decide your groups, who are your tier two kids that need your support? Put them in a group, help them, get them moving, and then work with your lower performing kids to provide more support.
Um, would, would that then, would you say these small groups are then homogeneously grouped? Would that be the proper, yeah?
All right.
Um, um-
That is not during the entire class, this is during a small, um, part of the class.
I understand.
Yes. So they're still exposed to grade level content, they're still exposed to peers who are at grade level and above grade level so that they have that competition going.
Okay. So, um, so how much time does the teacher then devote to this kind of instruction? That is with the small groups, if she is.
So it depends, who are you talking about? Are you talking about elementary, middle, high?
At the, let's say at the elementary.
But the elementary, for examples, they have a hundred, three, five schools that have a hundred and twenty minutes for math. So out of the hundred and twenty minutes, they will do fifteen minutes for a mini lesson. They will do maybe three, four stations of small groups where kids are rotating into small groups and then a fifteen, ten minutes of closure at the end.
Okay. Uh, the, I, I assume that on, on the last page, okay, the next steps, um, uh, what, um, is it? Could you go over again? I think you touched on this, auditing math in ELA curriculum K through A. What do you expect when that's completed? What is the auditing going to accomplish?
So when you audit curriculum, you look at student performance, right? And then you look at what we do in curriculum. So we look at our student data. Let's say, for example, our students in a domain, um, um, phonics, they're not doing well across all schools, right? Then we start looking at our curriculum, we start looking at how do we teach phonics? We start looking at K-two, what does that look like in K-two and how we're preparing kids? We, and that's what curriculum audit is, to make sure that your, um, issues that you're seeing in student performance are either connected to a curriculum issue or they're connected to a teacher issue. Once we find out if it's a curriculum issue, if across all classes, students are lacking specific skills, then we start embedding these skills in a systematic way into our curriculum. And that's why we do revisions every year to make sure that we're addressing the gaps that we have.
Do we do an audit every year?
So we, our coaches, our instructional coaches kinda do an ongoing audit as they go. So before every unit, they look at the unit, they look at feedback from last year. If we have cha, like minor changes or, um, resources that need to be added, we do that on an ongoing basis. But we also spend a lot of time during the summer to really take deeper looks at, um, areas that have shown significant need.
Okay. And again, I guess the book, and the second one is piloting Bookworms K-three. Is this the reading?
Yes.
The program that we're supposed to, the state says?
Mm-hmm.
That one, okay. Okay, I think I'll stop there, thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Let me remember what I had to say. Okay, um, it would be great if people would come prepared with their questions already. This, uh, deck was sent to us, I don't remember the date, but it was definitely before today. So I would be great if we could just have our questions queued up and not act like we've just seen this deck for the first time. It's after ten PM and our educators are in front of us waiting and belaboring the point on questions that could have been asked ahead of time or queued up. Thank you, Ms. Cantor, for coming prepared. I only have two points. For the interest of just, um, like ink, the, the slide that says district-wide index, it, when it, when you print it, it can be so dark, it's difficult for us to see, um, on a printed, the green part. Just, uh, I just wanna call that out.
This one?
Yes, a few of us had a hard time seeing, I have twenty-twenty vision, but a lot of people don't. And even I had a hard time seeing it, so just, um, just putting out there, just using a lighter shade of, of green.
It's actually electronically, it's, it's all linked.
Yes, we, yes, we can, yes, but I'm just saying for the interest of, because everybody was kinda just trying to see the, see the numbers. Um, that's number one. Number two, I wanna just call out, um, Alliance Districts and we don't want to, um, be in the habit of saying Alliance Districts having funding for Alliance Districts is, um, I don't wanna misquote whatever the, the conversation was. But Alliance Districts are given funding to gain support so you can see the data working. So obviously, it's working. Um, that's what equity is about. You don't get, you give districts extra supports if they're doing, you know, if they got it already. You give districts who need the supports the funding so that you can make sure that we can switch the data. So I just wanna make sure that it's not, for the listening public, we are appreciative of the state's funding. We are appreciative, um, of being, uh, you know, called out to say, hey, here are the supports so you can make some changes in your district. So I just wanted to put that on the record and that's all I have.
Anyone else, Ms. Cantor?
Thanks, I just wanted to say, if you had a hard time reading it, I did too. I put it underneath a bright light and you can read it. Well, that's how I did it at home, I put it underneath a bright light and you could read what it was. So just wanted to share that.
Mr. Wallaston?
I just wanted to echo, um, Ms. Taylor's, uh, Vice President. So I was just gonna say, I was gonna echo, uh, Vice President Taylor's comments about, um, the Alliance District funding. I just think it's an important thing for the state to took notice as well. Maybe they can take notice on us in two years when we'll be number one on some of the things that we employed and they will, to be able to, um, make some of that movement for when they decide to create new ideas and give us new mandates and such. So we can actually do and look at what works and what has allowed us to climb the ranks from number fifteen to being now number six, did you say? Okay, yeah, which is an amazing, which is an amazing feat within the, the past, what is that, four years? How many years is that?
Just four, yes.
Four years. I, I think that's a pretty big deal, you know, and into, we will be number one soon. I like that. Because upon coming in here, especially right after the COVID year, there was a lot of, um, beaten up going on in the room, not really fully considering a lot of the circumstances that we were coming out of, but to see that you guys really did hone in and get the work done, I, I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I have, I have two quick questions. You had mentioned, um, that trying to limit technology to five percent of the day or twenty minutes, is that across all levels? Is that a general?
Um, so like, that's where we hope it to be. It's, it's definitely might not be, um, like that in different grade levels. Um, but one way we're getting at it is really auditing our software. So every budget season, and I've been cutting every year since I've been in this position, um, we look at software that is gonna help and support. We look at software, I look at usage, I look at any direct correlation with student achievement, um, and I cut anything that could potentially just be used as a babysitter. Um, so that is kind of like, we're working on it from both ways. Teachers, um, now is the expectation that teachers are asking critical thinking questions, they are having kids solving problems. Um, it provides less and less time for them to put them on a software. But on the same, you know, on the other side, I'm working on looking and auditing all our software to make sure we just don't have a bunch of software out there.
Thank you. And the other question had to do with piloting Bookworms. So if things do go well, is that something that we would then adopt for all, all classes?
So that, that is a huge budget implication as well, um.
But by next year, by next year, if they don't change the law, is that when we have to have it implemented?
We have to have it implemented by next year, so it will be part of this budget.
So we can't pilot something else, or can you?
Nope, you only had one transitional year and then.
So you pilot something, you say it's not working, then you just pick one of the nine or whatever number? Seventeen it's up to now?
But I, I have to say, I think so far with the pilot, it does look like it is going in, um, the right direction and we might be able, and it is one of the, um, not less expensive program, but more affordable programs. So if we have to adopt district-wide K-three, I think that, that will be the route we take.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. I'm assuming that there's no committee reports. Next is other matters announcements. Regular board meetings, the next Board of Ed meeting is Tuesday, December seventeenth at six-thirty. There'll be a public forum on the budget process and the regular meeting will begin at seven PM here in the boardroom. The ad hoc cell phone policy committee meeting is Tuesday, December third at six PM, and that's virtual. Other announcements? Anthony? James, any announcements? Nathan? Ms. Cantor?
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Lockhart?
Happy Thanksgiving, please be safe, both driving as well as, um, changing your batteries and your smoke detectors and your carbon dioxide detectors, please.
Thank you. Mr. Halleck?
Um, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Ms. Taylor?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Pianos?
Don't forget to rotate your tires.
Happy Thanksgiving to all. Hopefully staff and parents and teachers will have a nice little break. And I'm looking for audience to visitors, Ms. Daly.
Good evening, this is Robyn Daly from the superintendent's office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speaker phone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own, and no comments will be made by the board at this time.
And as we said earlier, if we get to the three-minute mark, we'll let you know. Is there anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the board? Anybody online with a hand raised?
Attendees, yes, hands raised, no.
Therefore, without objection, we'll close audience to visitor and looking for one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
Ms. Taylor moved to adjourn, is there a second?
Back him.
Any discussion? Uh, motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Pianos, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay, extension, motion carries nine zero zero.
You gotta go home earlier.
We got a lot of extra people voting, there were more than nine votes. Ms. Daly, did you get the, all the votes?
You know.